Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Board Work Session of Wednesday, March fifteenth. Postponed from yesterday due to weather, so we appreciate everybody for being flexible with us. Can I have a motion to open the work session, please?
Motion to open work session. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we are going to start. We are very excited. Hearing about our Recreation Master Plan. This is really a blueprint that's gonna tell us sort of what we want to focus on going forward in terms of our Recreation and Parks Department. So we have our Recreation Supervisor here. So Ike, you wanted to take it away?
Sure. Do my best to talk into the microphone so that's recorded. And sorry for everybody. Put my bag to you. I apologize. Let me just get this up quick. Well, we're off to a good start. These heads showing up there. Take that, baby steps. Obviously, thank you to the Town Board for having us here tonight. I do want to start off by thanking Kellen, Christine, and Sabrina, and obviously, everybody else that had a hand in this endeavor over the last two years or so, two and a half, yeah. I think we started this actually just before COVID decided to kick in. So it's certainly been a work in progress. But thank you, everybody, that's been helping out along the way. I will... So what we're gonna do tonight is go over a basic outline of the plan. I'm not gonna go through all hundred and whatever pages of the plan tonight. We will certainly keep it short and sweet, keep it to an outline. Obviously, if you have any questions, let me know as we go through this. So the first few slides will just be kind of just an outline of the town, some basic information. And then we'll get into the meat and potatoes, everything. So this was all part of the inventory process. Obviously, a big part of the plan was establishing some of the details of the town and who we service. You know, over fourteen thousand acres. The big thing for us is over eighteen thousand residents that we try to service throughout the year with a variety of programs and special events. Let's see, next one. So this next slide is a, an outline of all of the open space and park properties in town, just to kind of give you a visual of some of, I'll say, some of the properties that we, that we maintain through our department. Pretty much anything in green, that's green in town, we have a hand in maintaining or taking care of. From islands and parks to cemeteries to just plain town open space. So keeps us a bit busy.
Even county parks?
We don't do county parks, so town-owned properties. That's just to kind of give you an idea of what the open space is in town and what our properties are in town. Here are the parks that we have in Newcastle that we maintain on a daily basis and throughout the year. So a quick breakdown. Our parks total, just about seven hundred sixty acres. We have just over sixteen parks and facilities that we maintain that make up that seven hundred sixty acres. Three indoor facilities that we offer programs at. The Community Center here in town, the Art Center, and the Town Hall Performing Arts Center. We do run some programs up there. And we are year-round. Between our special events and our programs, we're twelve months a year. So we enjoy it, keeps us busy, that's for sure. Comprehensive Plan, this was obviously something that the town had gone through. Actually, when I just started here, you, I knew Sabrina was not active at that point. But a lot of the goals in the Comprehensive Plan pertain to Parks and Rec. One of those that was in the comp plan that also brought up with our Rec Commission was the need for a new master plan. And that was really the catalyst to where we are now, to start this process. And to get this document where it needs to be, and I think we were happy with it at this point. So what's next? What is the master plan? As Supervisor Kat has mentioned before, it's gonna be our guiding document for the next seven to ten years. Programming, facilities, and it really outlined the voice of our residents and what they're looking for, and things that we can improve on, and things that they would like to see. So that's the whole basis of the master plan, is to kind of give us a roadmap over the next seven to ten years and when it comes to planning and programming. The planning process. So as you can see, we started back in 2020, taking an inventory of everything. Facilities, programming, events, staffing, which then went into outreach and visioning. So outreach was working, reaching out to the public. We reformed a subcommittee at that time that, from a wide variety of residents in town, from youth. Lisa's son at that time was on our, on our subcommittee. We had representation from seniors and all the way in between. So it was, it was really a good group. We worked with the Pace Land Use Group as well to help us in the, in kind of forming the outreach that we did for the master plan. Obviously, you have to do something with all that information that we gathered over the last two years. The analysis, the breakdown, really seeing what the feedback was from everybody involved, putting that into the plan. And then obviously, now we're at the point where hopefully that plan will get adopted and we'll be able to move forward into the future. Inventory. So this was a big part of the process. A lot of man-hours. Thank you, Kellen. He was knee-deep in that with us throughout the process. So it was really just getting an idea, like I mentioned before, of all the park resources that we have, programming and events throughout the year. This next slide is a quick snapshot of that information. We offer a lot of programs every season throughout the year. Not all those programs run, but we do like to put out a lot of options for our residents and see what sticks, right? And then we'll roll with it from there, and we're constantly evaluating that. Special events, we're up to ten now, and that doesn't include our senior events that Christine handles. I think, I feel like we almost have a senior event every month at this point. But these are our ten big special events that we do, starting next week with our egg hunt, which will actually be outside of Town Hall this year because of the work going on at Genny Park. So we will have ten thousand eggs on rec field next Saturday. And I can guarantee they will disappear faster than Tots Camps sold out. So, but that will start next year, and we roll right through to the bonfire, or end of the year bonfire, holiday bonfire in December. So we'll kick off our special event season next week. And then sports and youth sports programming, we, again, we do this year-round. We actually just finished up a great, successful youth basketball season thanks to one of our supervisors, Jamie Bucci, putting that on this year. We had a really good turnout, a lot of positive feedback with that. Hence the tie, you know, you got the basketball tie on tonight, you know. Gotta, gotta represent the...
For the tournament, that's...
Well, it is, too. It's twofold, it's twofold. Go a little green, we got St. Patrick's Day rolling up in a couple of days. We gotta get in the spirit. And we work with all these sports organizations in town. Whether they use our fields or not, we're constantly in touch with all the different groups in town. Park Profiles. This was a breakdown of all of the parks in town. Some of these maps have been updated. We've done a lot of work over the last two years in some trail work between Burden, Burden Preserve, Whippa Will, Glazier, and most recently, Warburg. Have all got a bit of a facelift with our trails this year. And that was all part of this process, right? I mean, as we're going through developing the master plan, and when you take these inventories, you really get a good look at, an inside look at how your parks are performing. So it spurred a lot of the work that we're doing now. We updated the, on the left is an abbreviated version of the amenity description that we have on our website, gives a quick glance at what each park offers. Outreach. So here's some pictures from, from the outreach that was done. Flashback when we had to wear masks everywhere we went. But we did Community Day, we did some outreach here, we actually did public presentations here in the Community Center, which were actually pretty well attended. We did online surveys, we had these surveys, and some of the art science plaster in all our parks. The real, the big thing, as it's highlighted here on the slide, is the amount of responses that we received. I really had no idea what we were gonna get when we started trying to survey the residents, what kind of feedback and how much feedback would we get. So we were really happy that we had such a big turnout with survey responses. A lot of good information. And you'll see some of that here. So on the left, you'll see why, was kind of one of the questions in the survey, why do you attend our parks, why do you attend our programs? Oh, breakdown there. Trails is a big thing, as you'll see in one of our slides, slides later on. But trails, youth sports, exercise were kind of some of the bigger hits as to why people come to our facilities and parks. The breakdown on the right is what people wanted, what they thought that Newcastle needed or they would like to see. The big thing was an indoor/outdoor pool. That really topped the charts. Next thing was an indoor multipurpose community center, I think, which would be great if we had the space for that. That would be fantastic, just because we could be more self-reliant. We wouldn't have to rely on other facilities to provide space for us. So that would be a huge help. And one of the other big things on here was an indoor field, kind of along the same things, turfing our fields or a field. But yeah, so these were some of the feedback that we received from the residents throughout our survey. And this will all, is all documented in the master plan, the goals and recommendations. Here's one of our outreach stakeholder participation, and another picture of us giving our presentations to, before, actually, when we just get to start with the master plan, to try to get some of that feedback in person. And the analysis of all the information that we received, which we kind of covered already, just the updated trail mapping, program needs assessment, all that good stuff that you get from the information. So here are some of the, the big numbers that came from, from all of the tracking that we did. Genny Park really kind of blew me out of the water. I knew we had a lot of, I knew we had a lot of traffic there. I didn't realize it was that much. But over two hundred thousand cars pass through that park every year, which is kind of insane. But, but it's great. It means we have a great facility, it means people that really want to use it. So it was nice to see our trail system. And we started this actually pre-COVID, during COVID, and after COVID. And these numbers have really kind of stayed the same. It's peaked a little bit during COVID, obviously, because everybody's home and getting out. But these numbers have really been consistent with the amount of usage that our trails see throughout the year. Whippa Will Park being the big one with over twenty-five hundred visits a month, and then Glazier not too far behind. So you can kind of see the bar graph there, how each park, park fares. But they see a lot of action, a lot of traction, which was all nice. It's like, hey, great, people are using their stuff more than we think. So plan preparation, obviously, this whole thing was a joint effort between the Parks Commission, town staff, all of us have been heavily involved throughout the last couple of years. So the meat and potatoes of the plan, we kind of got through all of that. These were the goals that were set in place, established when we started working on the plan. We had five goals, plan for the future, protect and manage existing parks, provide quality programming, engage and inform the public, and utilize and improve open spaces and facilities were the main five goals that, that we identified. What I'll do the next slides are all a breakdown of the recommendations for each of those goals. I'm not gonna go through all of them, just because I don't want to keep you here till midnight. I'm sure you guys would appreciate that. But we'll, I'll mention a couple. And if there is anything that you see out there that you want to ask me specifically about, we'll just fire away. When I do jump?
You jump.
Yeah, one too many times. There we go. Send some slides here. All right. Let's see if there... All right, give me one second. And we're doing so well. Just rolling through that. Let's see, let's do...
Just rec does an offering and computer courses.
I'm just a, I'm just a rec guy.
While, while you're looking for that, I just, you know, I know that this has been ongoing for years, and I just want to thank you for doing such a great and inclusive job. You know, I attended some of the, some of the planning sessions and, you know, as you said, I know my son was on the master plan steering committee and made us walk every single park many, many times. And, you know, I know the amount of outreach that went into this and, and the amount of analysis. And I'm just thrilled because we've been looking for this so that we can understand our goals and what, what, how we can provide for our residents in terms of increased accessibility for parks, programming, everything else. So I want to thank you all in advance for putting this together. I know it was, it was so much work, and I know all of us on the Town Board really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's been quite the learning experience, that's for sure. Including PowerPoint. Showing on there, right?
Yep.
That's where we need a TV timeout.
We can go back to the replay.
Where we get commercials.
Yeah, right? There we go. Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. That's why I stick to Parks and Rec. All right, so goal one, plan for the future. As you can see, it was quite a list of recommendations that came out of this research over the last couple of years. One of the things that always kind of jumps out to me, I mean, you can see what we've, between staff and, and the Rec Commission and the residents, what was prioritized and what everybody kind of thought, high, low, ongoing. One of the things I always jump to on here is the Creative Town Trail Development and Maintenance Master Plan. Not that I want to go through another master plan, as much fun as this was, but to, a slimmed-down version to where we kind of put a plan in place when it comes to trail maintenance. Because, you know, we're on it every year and we inspect the trails, but just with the amount of usage that it gets, to have a proactive plan in place is, is something that I would like to look into over the next year or so. And obviously, some of the things you'll see that were on the last survey, explore the feasibility of an indoor/outdoor pool, you know, things like that, that we took directly off of the surveys that we received from the residents. There's also the, you know, dog park at the bottom. It's always a hot topic.
I'm glad to see that.
Yeah? So go on, goal number two, protect... Settle down. There we go. Protect, manage, and maintain existing parks and open spaces. Obviously, continue doing what we're doing. I think, you know, if I am going to brag a little bit, I think our Parks Department is awesome. I think they've done a phenomenal job since I've been here over the last four or five years. Really, we've put a good team together there. Our foreman is, takes a lot of pride in, in what we do there. So they do a great job maintaining the existing parks. We're always very receptive to the feedback we get from our residents. But there are some things that we'll work with, with Conservation Department, and one of the things up there is the Vines Squad. So just kind of expanding what we're working on, where our focuses are through parks. Provide quality programming, which obviously, we already do. I won't brag. But we're always looking to improve, obviously. The events that we've done and continue to try to split up between the hamlets. And so we're covering both sides of town. The variety of events and programming that we have, staff is constantly analyzing what we're offering and getting feedback and seeing how different programs perform. So just a couple of the things from that list. Engage and inform the public. We do advertise, we're always looking for new ways to do so. The, one of the things that came up through the conversation, I know it was part of the comp plan, some of the things that came up through our senior activity group is the, basically, improve upon the inventory and dissemination for our social services. And we, Beth Steiger, who is our social worker now, she does a great job, and she's been doing that since she got here. So with, again, one of those things that, that's why what was great about this process is getting all this feedback and identifying what we're doing and what we can improve on. And then same thing, more stuff with the connections to maximize resident visitor benefit. So how we can tie all of this together, and this is where some of these things come in. You know, Amsterdam Park, because of summer camp, you know, it's been a great location for us for the last few years, since we've had summer camp up there. So to keep improving on that facility, to just make it a better overall experience for our campers that are there. You know, again, going back to one of the survey answers, looking at some of our, all our fields see a lot of traffic, but looking at ones that might be good candidates to transfer over to turf, you know, so that's listed in here as well. Just a couple of... This was a big one, actually. So plan approval. That's where right now, good news with the SIKR violation, it's type two, so no further action needed for that. So that was nice, nice little time saver there. Obviously, Town Board, you will have time to review the plan, and then at some point, set a public hearing, and then after that, we'll hopefully adopt the plan. So questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question.
Yes?
When you say short-term, medium-term, and long-term, what are, like, what, mostly for short and medium, what are the timeframes that you're looking at?
So medium is less than five years, I would say. Short-term, we're looking at the next year or two to try to make those changes.
Thanks.
Yep?
So I just wanted to thank everybody that worked on this, Kellen, Sabrina, Ike, Christine, and everybody on the Parks and Rec Commission. I've been the liaison in the last couple of months, just listening to everybody talk about how excited they were and how much work went into this. I'm very grateful, and I think we have a wonderful Parks and Rec Department. I can't wait to see us take it up a notch with the master plan. So just for everybody's inform, understanding, how did we determine what was a high priority, a low priority, a medium priority?
It was, again, it really was, like, this whole process was a collaboration. So we took the feedback that we received through the, all the surveys and the open meetings and that, and then brought that to the Rec Commission staff, and it was really just an open conversation of, okay, well, this is what the residents think, and here's what the commission thinks. Yeah, we're all on the same page, okay, great. And that's where we, and that's really how the discussion took place. But we put a lot of value into the feedback that we received from the residents. That was kind of the driving force on a lot of that.
No, I just, I, I should have said thank you as well. I've been looking forward to this since, since I followed the survey, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming out to the survey. We appreciate that.
That was peppered, but yes.
Yeah, well, everyone's thank you, thank you so adequately. Like, I, I just ditto what everyone said, and just thanks and gratitude for everything you've been doing. I'm just curious about your findings on programming, and I was curious specifically about which parts of the population you thought might be underserved. I know you have a lot of youth programming, and we have the senior center. Did you find that the middle segment of our population, you know, the adults, wanted more programs? Or are they maybe too busy with work or kids? Where did you find the gaps were?
There's two, actually, and it's, and it's always one of the hardest, two of the hardest groups for us to always reach. It's the teens, right? So you're eighth and ninth, tenth graders, you know, that's where we kind of, we kind of lose them after that a little bit. So it's addressing that. We, our programming for middle school-age kids has gotten a lot stronger over the last couple of years. So we've made improvements there, and then it's the adults. Outside of adult basketball and adult softball, like, those are strong programs. But outside of that, it's always tough, because obviously, you don't want to be looked in with the senior group, right? And then you have even the seniors that are a bit more active that, you know, want programs that are more active and not really senior-based. So it's always trying to find that, that healthy balance. So I would say those two groups are usually, and that feedback matched that, so.
Okay, and are you targeting those groups for...
We've been targeting, we've really focused on middle school and kind of the teenage group over the last couple of years. And one of our, our most recent hire, Dan, he worked with that group specifically in his previous job, so he's been kind of brainstorming a little bit on things that he can do. And then the adult programming, yeah, it's something that we're going to focus on. We've tried to add that kind of programming in there, but it's tricky, it's tough finding that balance, so.
I'll just add, I think I was looking back at our emails from two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, when Ivy was supervisor, about our priorities for the upcoming year, and this was two thousand and twenty-one, recognizing the importance of the master plan for recreation and park, or park and recreation, as someone's saying. But you, it's really a testament to all of you to make it happen, and it's important that we set our agenda, set our goals, and actually see it through, and this is a great example. It's not done yet in terms of implementing it, but to get us to this stage where you have something that's really concrete to move forward, and everybody collaborated to make it happen, it's a real testament to staff, to all of you and the people on the Rec Commission. So I, I really want to thank you for making this happen, and all of you for making it happen. It's really fabulous thing for the community.
Well, thank you, yeah, and it's, it's great to have this document now. I mean, this will really be...
As long as good is the people behind it and actually taking action, and that, that's the point of this. And yes, it's critically important to have it, but you are the people that make it happen, so.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Completely a team effort, you know, everybody was involved, so it was, and it was, it was a great team. Everybody on board for it.
Thanks. And to Jeremy's point, so part of our goals and objectives for this year, some of them were saying, well, we're gonna wait to see what the master plan says, the rec master plan says. So now that we have this, it's wonderful, and I know the board is gonna study it, and then with...
Plenty of good reading. Plenty of good reading.
Study it, we're gonna study. And then, you know, with, with you and everyone else, we'll, we'll sit down and figure out which of, which of the recommendations should be our priorities, at least for this year. And I know you've, you've put them into short-term, long-term, and high priority. And we'll go over that with you to figure out what kind of, we can start to really put, put money behind to figure out how we can implement them.
Great.
Also, I, I just want to mention that some of the results here are going to be useful in areas other than recs, parks and recs, because we'll be looking at our public spaces, right? And so I see that there's a big demand for, you know, a senior, a center, a community center. So that, you know, it, it could translate to other areas of what the Town Board ends up doing, possibly.
Possibly, right. So you're saying there's a chance?
So one of the nice things about...
I don't want to get ahead of...
So one of the many nice things about the rec master plan is it's a foundational document for staff to be able to identify those high priorities and to see where grant opportunities lie. And that's something that maybe we could, you know, steal Sabrina's talents a little bit more, a little more.
A little bit more.
To, to help us identify where those funding opportunities might be. Because it's great that we've identified them, but if we could put some money behind them and actually bring them to fruition, that would be fabulous, so.
I would be completely on board with that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you know, if you guys, anyone want to jump in? No? Okay, all right.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, well, thank you, and I know we have a link to it, so we'll be putting that up on our website.
Yes.
And it'll be in the newsletter, it's going out tomorrow as well, so all residents can, can click on and...
View it, yeah.
We think it'll help with our public comment.
So we need to, I mean, I guess our next steps are, we need to review it, and then we have to set a public hearing, correct? So do we want to do that now? Thank you, Ike.
The City Board has to review it first. I mean, it can be, you know, as quick as the board reviewing it next week and us setting it, you know, setting it for a public hearing on the twenty-eighth or...
Yeah. I mean, honestly, I can't imagine the board's gonna have substantive changes to the rec master plan. So let's plan, next week is not a work session, it's a, it's a public meeting. So let's plan to consider it next week. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Really appreciate it, everybody.
All right. You guys enjoy the rest of your evening.
No, no, we insist.
Please thank you. I'm so thankful.
All right. So now uh we are going to turn to the North Greeley net zero carbon legislation. Um, Ed, do you want to start us off?
Happy to. So okay, revised our red line version of the proposed local laws in the package before you tonight. And I brought before I walk the board through the red line, uh, it might be helpful to talk about how we got here. And uh, the timeline and the process that's been followed. So I'll, I'll go back to September twentieth um of last year. That's when the town received a zoning petition from the property owner asking for a zoning change. And that was accompanied by some materials um showing the proposed building really on a conceptual level. Uh, it was not a site plan application. It was a, a zone change petition and that's important. We can talk a little bit more about that. Um, then uh on November twenty-second of last year, the town board uh pref- uh preferred the, the draft local law to Westchester County Planning Board and Newcastle Planning Board. And that was after um revisions had been made to the, the proposed legislation by my office and my staff. Uh, then January tenth, um, and January twenty-fourth, I know you remember the joint work sessions that you held with the planning board. Uh, there was discussion about parking, um, and the impacts of parking, not only um demands on this particular site, but what uh it demand, uh it might generate off-site as well. Um, there was a discussion about process and who the approval authority would be for the special permit. Uh, and then on February seventh, the town board adopted a resolution that created a working group, a four-member working group. Um, so two, we had supervisor Katzen, uh councilwoman Chantab and two planning board members. Um, and they were tasked with looking at the then current legislation and um as informed by the joint work sessions that the boards had had and really roll up their sleeves and try to, you know, get in a little bit more granular in the, in the details of the legislation. So uh, on February sixteenth, uh that working group met, it was a public meeting. Um, and uh, uh, there was discussion um again about process, uh about height. Um, because of the draft legislation at that time still had a sixty-foot height uh limit or maximum. Um, and there was discussion around the fact that that might not be the right number, that, that, that may have um overshot the target. Uh, and the um, the, eh, the task that um the working group uh then asked the planning board to and, and staff to, to look at was uh the, the height. Because under the town code, height is not necessarily as simple as just measuring to the highest point.
Wasn't the planning board, it was a working group asked that?
The working group asked the, the planning board to go back and, and to, so, yes. And um, so height is, if you have a flat roofed building, yes, height is just measuring up to the highest point. But if you, if it's a peaked roof, it's a little bit more complicated than that. Um, the simplest way to think about it is if it's just a simple peak, um, you're looking at a midpoint between the highest point and the, the low point of the roof and then going to grade and measuring that distance. So and I, I think takeaway from that was um, I'll use a basketball analogy because it's March. Right? So we missed the backboard at sixty feet. All right. We really had to kind of dial that back and take a closer look at the number and, and, and really think about the way the town code requires height to be measured. So staff went back and, and looked at that and they generated a memo. Um, and the actual height of the building as proposed is about forty-eight feet as measured under the, under the town code. So in the current revised legislation, we've got fifty feet now as a, as a maximum. And I say maximum, I don't want the, the board to think that um that's a guaranteed uh height. That it's, that's fifty feet as of right, because the legislation has always contemplated that the approval authority, the town board, um in site plan review could always require a lower height. So it says fifty feet, but if a- after a site plan review, um, the town board decided that that really was not the right number, it could be lowered. Um, the, the, the working group also, um, uh, there's further discussion about process. Um, and I, I think the takeaway there was that the um, the idea that I think there was an acceptance that the approval authority really needed to be the town board. And that's the way the legislation was originally written. Um, there were some tweaks around um exactly how that would play out um process-wise, but um that, that, that remains. The town board would remain the approval authority uh for the special permit under the legislation. So I know the planning board met um a couple of times after the working group met. They met on February twenty-one and March seventh, and I know the town board received the memo from the planning board just this week on Monday. Uh, but that's the, that's the process that we've, have followed in terms of um the steps that were taken after the application came in. I just want to go back to what I said um about, this is legislation. This is not site plan review. There's no site plan application before the town board. Um, it hasn't been submitted yet. We're still at a, a conceptual level in terms of reviewing the proposal. The legislation you can think of, um, you, you're, 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 think of it as legislating for a box, a four-story box that's going to have certain physical characteristics in terms of height, in terms of lot coverage, in terms of floors, in terms of units. But it is not um at the level of detail of a site plan review. So when we're talking about um where, you know, how refuse is going to be handled on the site, how lighting is going to be handled, how vehicular access on the lo- on the lot is going to flow. Is there going to be a singular driveway or do we need two? Those are all site plan issues. So those will, there's, there will, there will, there will come a time where they will be addressed after the applicant, if the legislation is adopted. If the applicant comes forward with um a, a full site plan application that deals with those issues, deals with the engineering for the sewer, uh water, all, all of those details would have to be worked out in part of a full site plan application. Uh, uh, parking and, and where it is and, 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 and again, like internal circulation, all of those details would be before you then. And at that point, um, it's important to know that the town code, so eh, as a special permit, this would become the nineteenth special permit that the town code provides for. Uh, and there's a very uh well-known and used process for evaluating special permit applications. Uh, and that involves a referrals, mandatory referrals to the planning board, to the architectural review board. Because at that point you have the details and the architectural review board can take a look at the, the, the project um and the elevations for the project and the architecture for the project and come back with a recommendation. Uh, and the planning board would look at all of the site plan issues and come back with recommendations. You may decide to have further joint work sessions at that point with the planning board when you're working through these site plan issues. But again, it's all downstream. Um, that's, that's not for this process that would be started um if you introduce an uh, uh, adopt the resolution tonight, which is just setting the legislation down for a public hearing. Now, that said, we did hear um, um, uh, that the planning board was uh very interested in the applicant providing a model, scale model of the proposed building. And I know that's something that's come up um before.
Yeah, that's not new. They actually knew. I had asked for that months ago um from a developer, knowing that at least for me, and I'm sure for many other people, it's a lot easier to understand it when you see it on a model than on a piece of paper. Um, and they agreed to provide that. I think that they wanted, models are not cheap. So I think they wanted to understand what kind of proposed legislation they were basing that on before they built it. So now that we have something that's proposed, not final, um, they can build that. And it's my understanding, they're actually on the call now, I see, but it's my understanding they're going to try to have that for the public hearing. If not, we're going to make sure that um it will be available during a public hearing. And we like to also display it um so that people can come in and out of town hall and then look at it as well.
What were the other things that they were also going to submit? You mentioned a shadow review.
I think there were some shadow studies that were done also um specifically with respect to one forty-nine King Street. Um, and, and a few other things. I don't know if you want to ask them, but we can finish this first.
Yeah, I mean, uh, that, that type of the shadow study and, and, and frankly, even the model, um, I think would be helpful when because two things are going to happen. As a legislative body, you're going to be looking at this legislation, getting public comments on it. Um, and um deliberating as a legislative body. You're also going to wear another hat. You're going to be the lead agency under SECRE. So you're going to be looking at environmental impacts and that's where a model may help you uh assess the, the, the massing and the height relative to the street, relative to the other structures that are already there. Um, so that, that I think is where I think there's not, there's may, there may be a few provisions in the legislation where a model might inform your thinking a little bit. There's one involving what we're calling the, the, the street um frontage essentially, how the, the building actually interacts with the sidewalk. Um, but that even that's at not a very, you know, detailed level. But the bottom line is the model we've been told by the applicant is coming and hopefully it'll be here by the eleventh.
And, and I've been told it's not just, it's not just a model of the building. It's going to incorporate some of the surrounding areas as well. There, I think they're determining how much they can incorporate into the model, but it's certainly going to be able to show perspective. It's not just going to be a model of the building.
I have a, a question. Oh.
Jeff, uh, Jeff, did you have a quick comment on that?
Yeah. So we're working on the model. We're trying to figure out the scale of it because as you go bigger in a model, uh, if we go too big, the building itself will get lost. So we're working on that. We had a call today to determine the area to include. Um, and we're going to come up with some photos to show you to kind of gauge what would work best uh and show it to you to see how to produce that model and hopefully have it done by the public hearing. Secondarily, we did a shadow study. We submitted it and showed it. It was in the original package we presented, I believe in June last year when we showed everything. Um, and we showed it to the residents of one forty-nine uh King, showing that there is no shadow and also showing the view, what they would have looking down on the project. Uh, and they were very pleased with it.
Um, can I ask a question, Jeff? Will, will your model actually include one forty-nine King Street?
That's what we're trying to do to include and see if it will work and not interfere with making our project so small that it really doesn't show you the project. So we're trying to figure that out. We're running some tests now to see how it'll work.
I, I'm not sure how, how it would make it small in the sense that if we see it along with one forty-nine King, we would have a, a good um overview of how it, how it looks with the area. I, I don't quite understand the concern about making it small.
I, I think it at least needs to include the height of our one forty-nine King. It obviously doesn't need to necessarily include the one forty-nine King buildings, but it needs to, to show where they are situated in terms of the height of the building.
Right. All, all we're saying is the bigger area you do for your model, the smaller the buildings in that model become. Otherwise, it's not something that's feasible to build as a model. So to define the area that we're doing, we're just running some schedules the architect's doing to see. We're trying to include that as well as other areas. So you get a true feeling for the building and we just want to make sure the sizing is appropriate.
And you, you're going to send us sort of a picture of where you think, okay, so we'll look at that um and, and see if we think it's appropriate.
Good way of thinking about that. So the developer Chapel Quail Crossing did a model, but the model was the size of a good-sized dining room table. So all of the buildings were tiny, uh, and that might not be what you're looking for here.
Right.
Well, that was a large, a lot, a lot larger area.
Yeah, that's true.
And you can certainly have two separate models, one for the greater scale for the area and one that's more direct. I don't know the cost of these things, but it's certainly something that's plausible.
Yeah. And I have a, I have a question about um SECRE and the order of things. So this is my first go around with something like this. So what I've seen is that you do a SECRE analysis prior to legislation and passing legislation. Well, we seem to be doing this in the opposite way. So I don't quite understand that, the order of things.
SECRE has to be done and finished before you adopt the legislation. But all we're doing tonight is actually introducing a draft and then opening a public hearing. When the public hearing opens on the legislation, at the same time, you will simultaneously be doing SECRE review and receiving information about the environmental impacts of the project.
But if we don't know what the legislation will look like mostly, then how, how can we do an accurate SECRE review?
Well, you know that it's uh, and I say project, really it's, it's, it's the legislation. What is the legis- what is the legislation pro- providing or allowing this property owner to build? And that's why I said like a, a four-story box, um, you know, and with these characteristics, it's going to have forty-five residential units, it's going to have this much retail, parking, this, just a very sort of basic um, uh, dimensional characteristics, operational characteristics, so that those facts now can be uh analyzed for SECRE. So when you know you've got X number of units, you can sort of, you know, extrapolate. Okay, that's going to maybe generate an X number of a- additional students for enrollment purposes and go from there.
So obviously we, we can change the legislation uh as a result of the SECRE, you know.
And this is a result of public comment. So generally what we would look at is, is like the worst case scenario. So we know what the legislation is now. So if that's, we know it's not going to get bigger than what's in the legislation. So we try to look at if, if it was built to every inch and every size that's in the legislation, what would be the impact? Knowing that if we then, based on public comment and um, and our review decide to make it smaller, we already know that it's going to fit within SE. We've already done the, the kind of worst case scenario under SECRE so that we can always make that fit.
It's even a little, uh, I would say simpler here now that it's been, um, the legislation really is just tailored to a single property. Because before or with any zoning legislation, you do need to look at, uh, well, not just here, but the entire district, wherever this change would apply, what, like you said, are the max, eh, not a worst case scenario, but what's the maximum build-out look like? What, what are the greatest impacts that might be realized if this is something that goes on the books? Now we're just dealing with a single property. So it, it's going to be, I think, much, a, a much smaller scope and, and more precise.
So um, along those lines, so we're considering today a, a resolution to set a public hearing. That's so that we can then solicit comments from the public that will go on the record, that can then inform the legislation. Um, without setting that public hearing, we don't really have any mechanism to get those kind of comments on the record for us to then incorporate into what will be the final legislation.
Yeah, that's the purpose of a public hearing.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, before, I, I just, sorry, a second. I, I, yeah, I just, I just want to, to express a few thoughts before we decide on whether we're setting the public hearing or not. Um, I, I just, I do think that the North Greeley corridor is a really good opportunity for this town to have a, a walkable retail residential and public space area.
Mm-hmm.
And what I, you know, I definitely am in favor of developing this area. What I um have concerns about is not having done it through a process where we set a vision for the North Greeley corridor before passing legislation for one particular parcel. Because I think that it's a missed opportunity. We could have taken that opportunity to have a balanced and equitable view of the North Greeley corridor. So to have the opportunity for all of the properties there to develop in a more balanced way. So whatever it is that we're going to hear about this one parcel, it's going to be about the one parcel. And it will possibly overshadow, we will have a, perhaps a four-story building that will overshadow the other properties on North Greeley, which may not have the opportunity to develop because fifty North Greeley will have taken advantage of all the infrastructure capacity for the area. And so it's not that I don't want the development, but I want the development to be balanced and equitable. And I'm just afraid that we have a missed opportunity here be- because we didn't set a general goal for the area. So that's my overall concern, other than, you know, the process for legislating for this one parcel. It's the fact that we are legislating for only one parcel. Um, and I don't want anyone to misunderstand because it's been said, this is nothing to do with returning. And I don't want anyone to misunderstand, because it's been said, this is nothing to do with returning to form-based code. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we could legislate for three stories, you know, I don't know what it would be, but the point is that it would have been a vision for the North Greeley Corridor that would have been balanced and equitable, and it would have been our vision, but now instead we're going from a a developer's vision for one parcel, and that's really what I regret here, and I I just feel that we have a missed opportunity. So in terms of being realistic and and doing something moving forward, because I'm not saying put the brakes on this, I'm just, I would like to look at this project within a greater context of what would we wanna see for North Greeley? And what would we think of this parcel in that particular context? Giving other parcels the opportunity to develop as well. And I don't mean all develop into four stories, but develop into something that makes sense in its scope and scale for our infrastructure and what we have. So that that's just, those are my concerns going forward here. And I I just feel that going into a public hearing with this current legislation is premature. But if that's what the board wants, and I, you know, we can work with that. But tha- that's how I'm looking at it, and I just wanna be very transparent with everyone about my thinking on this.
Thank you. Quick question for you, Ed. I just lost my train of thought. Oh, if if a special permit, I just wanna understand this, and I want the public to understand this, if a special permit is adopted for this parcel, does that kind of open the gates for other parcels throughout the downtown to say, hey, I want that special permit applied to my property?
No, because the way the legislation is written, there are certain dimensional requirements that the other properties wouldn't meet.
Okay.
Size, location, this is a, this is a one-off, and it's not ever gonna be the case that legislatively a property owner can say, I'm entitled to something because somebody else got it. Now zoning is all about drawing the line someplace, and that's your prerogative. And you're doing it here on this property on North Greeley, based on a tremendous record and a tremendous amount of analysis. And deliberation has gone into trying to solve for the vacant property there, and just in overall what can be done to revitalize that particular part of the downtown. So in my view, there's no, no reasonable person could say that this is arbitrary, that this isn't the result of a very long and thorough deliberative process, and it's based on a mountain of data that this board has been reviewing now for years.
Okay, thanks.
So I don't know if now's the appropriate time, but since Vicki shared her comments, I guess I I feel like it would be fine to get my thoughts on the project on the record too, and I actually take a different view. I'm someone who, I I just feel more comfortable with incremental change. And for me, what makes me comfortable about this project is that we're only looking at fifty North Greeley, I'm not prepared to take on the entire North Greeley Corridor. I don't know, after, you know, I know Vicki, what you're saying, that you don't wanna instigate a fit, a a form-based code to be, but I could see how it could turn into that when now we're talking about developing the entirety of the street, when, you know, it seemed overwhelmingly that the town did not wanna consider that. And I know that there's a lot of controversy and opinions and thoughts and ideas about fifty North Greeley, and that's why I wanna open it up to public comment, and that's why I want everyone to understand that this is just the legislation, we're gonna open it to public comment, we're going to have a model, there's going to be studies done, and everyone is welcome to provide their feedback, but I'm most concerned with just what we're going to do with this one vacant property and and how we're going to address the needs and wants of the community, and then take it from there. I don't wanna rush to build and rush to develop, and then we have vacant storefronts, because we just didn't have what we needed to keep foot traffic. So that's just where I'm coming from, I'm very comfortable looking at this just a parcel-to-parcel basis. And I just wanted that to be on the record for everyone since it came up tonight.
And also, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, just because we're putting this out tonight, it again invites public comment, it doesn't mean that we can't completely revamp the legislation based on public comment, is that correct?
That's true.
And I I also wanted to reiterate your point about the referral process, that there's nineteen special use permits that the town has issued, and once we issue the special permit, there's the referral process, meaning the planning board gets a say, the architectural review board gets a say. I've been very open, and I think everyone on this board has been very open, that we want there to be collaboration with the architectural review board and the planning board. We take what they say to heart, I value their opinions and their expertise, and we're not going forward making those decisions. I know that there are people making, you know, tinkering with the architect's plans, like, that's why we have experts here, that's why we have these plans, that's why we have these advisory boards. So there is opportunity for them to provide us feedback, and then we go back to the developer, and we make changes based on public comment, based on what our experts think, based on what works well with the community. So, you know, Ed, I just wanted to reiterate that and and make sure that that point wasn't glossed over, that we're not unilaterally deciding the scale, the mass, the height of of the project, that there will be time for public comment and time for expert review of this project.
And that's typical.
It's required.
So, you know, if you looked at Chapel Quay Crossing, for instance, I I remember, God, cuz it was really, really late nights, the the legislation was passed, and then we spent a very long time doing site plan approval for that, and I.
There are actually three steps there, right? There was the legislation, and then there was something called a PDCP, or Plenary Development Concept Plan, that the town board set, and then that was then handed to the planning board to deal with the site plan issues, so really a three-step process there.
So I I guess it'll be making my turn, since we're all sharing our thoughts. Generally speaking, I, it, perfect can be a obstacle to progress and the type of development that the community wants, whatever that means. Not necessarily my vision individually, or or anyone's vision individually, but what it means for the community, because if we do that, we're gonna get nowhere fast, and we're gonna find ourselves stepping backwards. I I would personally not rather handle this fifty North Greeley on an island by itself. It's a piece of a puzzle, albeit a very large piece of a puzzle, meaning every lot in our hamlet is one of those chips, one of those pieces, and somehow they all lock together or link together. I do think that we have to move forward with this, because there's an opportunity to 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 see something that's really positive for this community. But we can't lose sight of, it is not an individual plot, it's part of the hamlet, and you can have incremental development and growth parcel by parcel, but I think it's incumbent upon us to understand how it all works together. And there needs to be a commitment, I believe, from this town board, not in any way, shape or form, with those dreaded three letters. They're not JMS, or they couldn't be some, but FBC to others, there can't be anything like that, that's not on the table. But there needs to be at least a general understanding on what do we wanna see, we again, meaning the community for North Greeley, whether that's just the west side, whether that's also the east side, what, whether that's no one wants seventy-five feet, obviously, whether that's thirty feet, forty feet, keeping the current heights, what new number of units we're going to see here, the setbacks we're gonna see here, that's all the domain, or at least in part, something that's gonna come from the planning board, as with any project. And this vote today to move the ball forward, if you will, is not a vote to say, we are doing this in the exact verbatim as it's legislated or drafted now. There's a lot of tax dollars we're missing, there's a lot of drought in the hamlet that we're missing, there's a lot of affordability and workforce and and higher-end housing that we're missing. There's potentially restaurant and commercial that we're missing. So this is a mechanism to move that forward, but I can't stress enough, for me personally, it can be parcel by parcel, but it can't be on an island, we have to see how it works together, and it has to be a commitment to say, if we're going to do this, we have to understand how it works with everything else. And I've learned from my past that clearly those voices are not just ours, there are far more many voices, especially when we're hearing and and that seems to be changing, what could be potentially, part of me potentially becoming now from the state, from the governor, and I'd rather we be taking that initiative than it being sort of decided, if you will, for us. So whether it's ARB, whether it's the planning board, whether it's the community, I I am in support of this, this, I'm not married to what it is today. And I look forward to hearing more from our voices, but from everyone out there, not just the ten of you, but all the folks in the community, so that's my sharing my thoughts.
Okay, thanks. Holly?
Well, I I didn't know we were doing this, but.
I'm glad it is kinda evolved.
I, so, I, much like Jeremy and Vicki have said, I I do regret that we don't have a bigger picture yet for the for the North Greeley Corridor, and and I do wish that we had that, but I think that moving something forward is most important right now, so I'd like us to be revisiting the concept about the bigger picture out there. But I really wanna make sure that we move this forward and we don't cut off our nose despite our base, so to speak, by preventing and not enabling progress while we wait for something better.
That's, okay, thank you. Um, all right, and then I guess I'll just say really quickly, that, you know, one of the things that's very important to me as we're looking at potential development of this site under an application submitted to us, is that we make sure that we have input from, significant input, from our planning board, from our architectural review board, from our residents, and and all our constituencies, I've already, you know, approached the schools, so make sure they wanna look at it. I've spoken to merchants, there are a lot of great things about this project. Something that stands out to me actually is that the way this is proposed, a lot of it can be built off-site and then kind of dropped onto the site, so that it's not going to really inhibit our merchants and in the Chapel Quay Hamlet from being able to to function appropriately, it's not going to cause large, you know, traffic issues upon building it. That doesn't mean, again, that it will be built according to the legislation, but I think it's very important to put that out there so that we can solicit formal comments from all constituencies and our planning board and our architectural review board, I think that's very important. And so I would like to see this move forward, so we can start soliciting that formal input in addition to the meetings that we've already had.
So I can quickly just run through what I think are the more substantive changes to the version that's being introduced tonight, and I would jump right to page three of the draft and flag the slightly tweaked table there on a minimum requirement of street parking. I I think, Sabrina jumping, if I get this wrong, but I I think it's fair to say that the the big change there is the idea that, and you have to look to the next page to see this, we've taken out the reference to a potential twenty-five percent reduction if a car-sharing program is implemented. And I think the concern there is, we've heard that the car-sharing program or model is a little untested, there's maybe not a great deal of data about its about its efficacy, so rather than jump to twenty-five percent, kind of put that number out there, spiral it back a little bit, and let's stick with one space-per-unit residential if a car share is provided. And again, the thinking is that we don't know what, how much efficiency would be achieved, so we're gonna hew pretty close to the one-per-unit minimum requirement that we started with.
Well, and so that just reminds me, and the applicant's providing a, you know, parking study as well, and and I guess I can say this, you know, the town board is interviewing, or has interviewed consultants that would really be hired by us to look at those parking studies that the applicant is gonna bring us. So, you know, that could change, if based on their analysis, they do say, you know what, it is shown that there can be a reduction, or there shouldn't be a reduction at all, that's something that's, this process is gonna end up informing.
Right, I think the takeaway with respect to this change is that we're starting with a more conservative approach with respect to parking, and we'll see what the data tells us. Then I will go to page five, and there are new, there's new content there around the energy standards that would be built into the legislation. I'll just let the board read those.
And what are these based off of? Is this the new state law?
That's a separate question.
The energy standard actually exceeds the state law, it is a working document that is in effect, you know, that the state is is trying to implement. But what it does is it creates the ability to do better than the stretch code currently does. The code that we're referencing in this code is probably two years out from becoming state law. But there's two elements to this, to the energy code, it's adherence to additional energy standards which require actual internal testing for air release. It also asks for applicants to adhere to a program where they can get tax rebates for different conservation techniques that they would implement, so it's really a two-tandem. We're asking them to employ a higher energy standard, but we're giving them an avenue to recoup some of the costs of that energy standard.
That is, is that available for a single family?
No, it is not, this is for commercial construction, and a multifamily building is considered commercial construction.
So I'm sorry, just to understand that a little more, so we're not, if there are no rebate-type programs available, though, we're not saying you can't do that work.
That rebate is is known in the industry for being a longstanding program for this type of development with these energy standards. There's no concern that that rebate will not be available years from now if the site is not developed, and and we still have this in place, the energy code trending that's been occurring will completely negate that. Meaning, meaning this energy standard is what we're going to have to live up to. At this point in time, the state, or it's actually federal, I believe, is offering these energy incentives that do not have been on the books for a while, and they will not disappear. We, in order to come up with this standard, we spoke with professionals in the energy industry at the state level, representatives who work, the building inspector who works with other professionals in that industry, and we feel we have a solid recommendation that's not unreachable, but something that can be reached and something that does offer some assistance to reach it.
So, I I hear what you're saying, but given that we can't predict the future as to, you know, budget cuts either at the state or the federal level, is there a way we can say, you know, a type of building that is currently, that, for which rebates are currently available?
And and that's what it does.
Because we can't necessarily predict that they will be available in the future, even though I I hear what you're saying, that there's no indication that they won't be available, but.
We we tie, we didn't tie the legislation to the actual rebate, we tied it to the type of improvements that would oh, would.
Would qualify for the rebate.
Would qualify for the rebate, so.
But I would say under current, you know, as of the date the legislation's enacted.
Well, it doesn't, there's no reference to rebates at all.
No, I know, but that program is a rebate program, right?
Well, the standard, though, the standard is a, is a objective, uniform standard, right? So if if if, then that'll remain constant, presumably.
We hope, we hope so, yes.
So there's either a little bit of help getting there, or there's not. And then maybe this is a good time to point out too, that there's a little relief, there's a provision in the legislation that would provide an opportunity for the applicant to come in and ask for some modification, basically, under a hardship or feasibility standard, so if you ever had to cross that bridge, there's a way over it. So the only other, I think substantive change I can point out is on page, next page six, and we've already talked about it, it's the height, so six. So sixty has become fifty. Um, and that's, that's essentially, if that's the legislation, the resolution that is on your, um, agenda. Is again to refer it to the Newcastle and Westchester County Planning Boards and set this down for a public hearing for April eleventh.
Okay, perfect. And, and again, just to clarify, it does not mean we're adopting the legislation. It would solely mean that we're, we're authorizing those referrals. And, uh, the ability to solicit public comment that's on the record, which then may inform changes to the legislation. Okay, thank you. Alright, anyone else have any thoughts, comments? Okay, alright, so we are going to move, and again, you know, for people here who may have public comment on the legislation. There's gonna be a time to, to give that on, on April eleventh and thereafter. Okay, so we're gonna move to you, Rob, um, our esteemed controller to give us an update on the financials. Thank you, Serena.
Hi, thank you. Um, first a couple of things, I'll jump ahead one item in the agenda and just talk about the water rents. Um, for any of the new board members, this is a procedure we do every year at this time. Um, we take the town code provides any water rents that are a hundred and eighty days past due. Uh, as a tax collection, as of, uh, April first, um, our town requires us to put them on the tax bills. At the end of January, you get kind of a scary letter in the mail if you are in danger of this and it lets you know this might be a tax lien on your property. Basically goes on your tax bill, if you pay your tax bill, it's not a lien, if you don't, it becomes a lien along with the rest of the unpaid levy. So, uh, end of January, we send that letter out, they get six weeks to make good, some of them do, a lot of them don't. Um, we see on this list, um, the amount is typically similar every year. We do see probably a good fifty percent or more are people that are frequent flyers. They just, um, rather than pay their bill quarterly like you're supposed to, they have it re-levied every year. So, um, the applicable penalties are added too, and it goes on their tax bill.
And then it just gets recouped when they pay their, their tax bill?
Yep, exactly. So, um, typically, we don't shut water off in the town and this is our mechanism to, to get any unpaid water rents.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, it was, it's a proposed action tonight and it's, uh, was a memo to me to authorize. Uh, authorization to commit twenty-twenty-two operating surplus. Um, we've talked about this for probably a couple of years now. The town is in negotiations to purchase the property on Joan Corwin Way. Um, unfortunately, it's not proceeding as fast as we would like. Um, what my memo seeks is authorization to commit, um, fund balance. So rather than it just get dumped into unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, we're gonna take it and, and, um, commit it for the purchase of this property. Um, I think it's a little bit cleaner when we do the financial statements, that way it doesn't kind of overstate our unassigned fund balance. This is an obligation we've been expecting, we know the exact amount, uh, the procedure just hasn't followed through. So, um, that's what I'm asking for at this time. And I, and I'm kind of tying to, trying to tie it into the sale of forty-eight Hades Cross. Basically, we sold one town property, we're gonna buy another one, still gonna be a profit there, but, um, I'm kind of tying those together.
So, I think that's a good idea, but just a question on that. If for some reason the, uh, purchase of that property fell through, would we be able to reassign those funds?
Yep, absolutely, town board can do that. So, um, at, at that level of fund balance, there's different designations. If the town board commits it, only they can uncommit it, so it couldn't be used for anything else, but it, it could be at your say-so.
Okay.
Any questions?
I had a related question though.
Okay.
That I'm springing on you right now.
Okay.
Did you see in the state, um, budget, there's a proposal that for any in-rem properties now?
Yes, I did.
That, uh, we may take over, that we can only recoup the taxes and not any, any, any.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't get any surplus from that, yes, I did see that proposal, yeah. Um, forty-eight Hades Cross was, was a really rare property, that was a large property that had a lot of outstanding taxes on it. And the value of it was actually higher than what was outstanding and what we were able to sell it for. We haven't done a lot of interim, a lot of the interim processes in town, we've done it every couple of years. Um, nothing as lucrative as that, um, what's the other one, Hidden Hollow, Jim?
Yep.
Um, we were able to sell that, but I think it was kind of, uh, we sold it to a developer that I think had to demolish it and rebuild from the ground up.
Yeah.
So, um.
It was a knockdown.
Yeah, so we haven't been in a situation like this, but I, I did understand that. And basically, we would be able to recoup just the delinquent taxes and the remainder would go back to the property owners, what I hear.
Right.
Hades, Hades Cross, that's a dream outlier.
Yes.
Probably never to be seen again.
Yes.
It, it, it was being in the right place at the right time, things had to happen that typically don't happen. So I don't want you to think that that's, you know, a, a source of, it's not.
Okay, yeah, I know there are some municipalities who, who actually process interim proceedings like every month. Um, and this is a significant, would be a significant impact. So I wanted to just get a feel for, for the type of impact that would be on our town.
And, um, I, we were talking with this, with, um, Chrissy in the last couple of weeks. The amount of delinquent properties we have is, is almost down to nothing at this point compared to what we've had in the past. We've had many millions of dollars of delinquent taxes, um, dating back to, I think, two thousand and eleven. And I don't think we have anything older than fifteen or sixteen at this point.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, I, I think might be only about a million dollars total or even less than that. Um, so that process cleaned up quite a few, there were a couple of other properties that, um, we recently got big payments on that were severely delinquent.
Right, and, and the other thing that, that the board should just be aware of is that we, everyone is aware that there are some zombie type properties in town.
Mm-hmm.
And they're really a different animal, so that's a situation where the bank owns them, we're made whole, but the property is vacant and. We, gosh, we wish it was an MREM and we could take it, but, but those are instances where, um, like the old Cogger property, the North Place. Where the bank owns it, the taxes are fully up to date, we don't know why they don't sell it, we wish they would sell it, we invite them to sell it, but. Um, and they would recoup their money somehow, but, um, so most of the properties, that's the scenario. So the bank actually pays, um, the taxes because they don't wanna lose it in rem because they're valuable and they will be able to recoup their, their investment. So, um, so again, Hades Cross was just, you know, never happened again.
Okay, unfortunately. Okay, I'm just gonna share my screen with this.
Wow, I think you might wanna make it larger.
Uh, shoot, I've run into this before with, on my screen, it looks like it's full. Carrie, do you have a fix for that?
Your help will come in.
Shows up fine, I'm like.
It's late.
Hey, it looks good on this.
Where is it, back here?
Yep.
Let's see, go to slideshow. Let's try to get back to, sorry.
Yeah.
Alright, let's try this.
Do I email it to you and you guys?
Uh, that will be our next stop if this doesn't work.
Please hold while we're experiencing technical difficulties.
Now go file. No. Ay yi yi, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll just go paddle around the computer.
Okay, one more time, ready? Which is the, make sure we have the right one open.
Wednesday.
Five forty-five, this one?
Yep.
Okay. Now we go back to zoom. Yeah, and then we're gonna hit this play right here. Oh, it worked. Don't touch it, it worked.
You gotta go back.
Uh, just trying to get, I'm not good with your touchscreen. Basically, we wanted to play.
Yeah.
Slideshow. No, uh.
Whatever you did before, I can work on that.
Um, we're probably good with.
If we're good with that side.
Can you see this?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
We're back.
Shows up great when I practice because I did practice before it came in. Okay, so I'm just gonna go over some of the financials and, and trends that I expect to see from twenty-twenty-two. Um, as the board knows, I actually have my audit next week and so these are not audited financial statements. And, and some of these numbers can and probably will change, um, but I have a good idea where we're trending and I just want to let the board. Kind of have an idea of that, just so we have no surprises along the way. Um, so we'll talk first about the general fund and, um, I will say twenty-twenty-two was a, was a very good year for the town. Um, both in, uh, on the revenue side of the ledger and the expense side of the ledger. You'll see that my theory of budgeting has always been very accurate on expenses and very conservative on revenue. Um, and we find that if you're short in revenue, it's very hard to make that up on the expense side. If you're a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars off in revenue, trying to cut a hundred thousand dollars out of your budget in November, December is almost impossible. Fortunately, we haven't been in, uh, we haven't been in that predicament. So general fund for twenty-twenty-two, right now, the revenue looks like it's trending up about nineteen percent versus budget. Um, I'll go through a couple of those reasons why. Um, one of those is interest earnings, uh, we're actually up about six hundred and eighty-nine percent, uh, against budget. Um, I think everybody has seen the interest rates and seen what the Fed has done over the last twelve or fifteen months. Um, at budget time, when we were preparing the twenty-twenty-two budget in the late summer of twenty-one, uh, and early fall. Nobody could have predicted the interest rates would increase at a quarter point almost every month for about six months straight. So, uh, we had no idea that was coming, that was, um, in these terms, very welcome to us. Um, for the economy, probably not so good, but in particular for the town, very good. Um, another number that we saw just tremendous increase was, um, mortgage tax, over a hundred percent of our budget in mortgage tax. Uh, unfortunately, we see already trending that that's not going to continue, um, with mortgage interest rates in the sixes and, well, seven percent. Um, that sure slowed the market down. So while we did have, uh, did more than double our mortgage tax in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, the first four months that we've seen figures for are. About half of what we were looking at in twenty-twenty-two, unfortunately. Um, building permits, another banner year for that, about a hundred and forty percent versus budget. Um, we had some of the building permits come in from Chappaqua Crossing. I think we'll have some more money coming from that in twenty-twenty-three. Hopefully, that will stay pretty steady, um, that has been pretty steady for us over the last few years. Uh, recreation programs came in great, um, and that spans just about every program that I cast. Uh, that does, goes from adult athletics, it's youth athletics, it's summer camps, it's senior programs, et cetera. Across that whole board in the total of about, I think, nine hundred thousand total in all the programs. Uh, that was up about twenty-one percent versus the budget. Sales tax, um, another good year with sales tax. Uh, again, for another number that I'm less optimistic in twenty-twenty-three, I think we all see the economy slowing down. I know purchases of large goods like automobiles and appliances, et cetera, is trending downward the first couple of months. Uh, the numbers not that far off from last year, they are down from last year from what I've seen so far. But, um, I wouldn't expect to repeat twenty-twenty-two, um, this year.
Has the percentage of sales tax, have we gotten a larger percentage?
Yeah, back from about, I think it's two thousand and nineteen or twenty, I, I don't recall exactly. Uh, starting in August of that year, we did, the county began collecting an additional one percent.
Right.
And the town has definitely seen, um, several hundred thousand dollars more a year.
Okay.
Than we had in the past. And probably the only real significant revenue category that was off was parking permits. Um, I know everybody, if you look at the parking lot today, looks a lot fuller than it has probably in the last, uh, I don't know, six or eight months. Um, unfortunately, the timing of that was kind of weird, we moved the parking permit season, it went from June, we went to September. We went to December to try to, um, kind of maximize our revenue. Um, what we found out was people didn't really come in in December, they'd been coming in in January. So a lot of the parking permit revenue was realized in January twenty-three, not in December of twenty-two. Uh, as it turns out, it's not really gonna hurt us for twenty-two, but that number was off significantly from last year, or rather versus budget. On the expense side, we were about three point one four percent below budget, which is a pretty good number. Um, legal expenses, not sure how, but we did pretty good job with legal expenses and, and, uh, we didn't have, uh, as many costs outside of the retainer. As we had maybe budgeted, so that was down about fifteen percent versus budget. The, uh, employee benefits category, and that's a category that accounts for in the general fund, over six million dollars of the general fund. That was actually down, uh, close to one percent, but that's a pretty good number when you have to consider there's healthcare in there. There's workers' compensation that can be variable and there's also, uh, retirement system that has been pretty volatile over the last couple of years. On the expense side, some of the areas that were trending up, gasoline sixty-eight percent, utilities fifty-three percent. I think everybody probably sees that in your personal life, um, we're all paying more for both of those things and, and the town is as well. Um, IT expenses were up about ten percent over budget. If you remember last year, we had to make some pretty significant changes for, um, security wise. Um, we brought in a whole new security suite from our IT vendor and, um, um, you know, we didn't foresee that again at budget time. But when we, um, when we went to renew our cybersecurity insurance, we got a ridiculous renewal rate. And that was because we didn't have some of the security features that they needed, we now have those in place fortunately, um, but it did come at a cost. I duplicated that legal expenses because I liked it so much, employee benefits. Uh, so that was the general fund, um, we are looking at a pretty nice surplus coming in, um. In, at the end of twenty-twenty-two, um, so I'm, I'm giving you the good news first, we're gonna go through the results of twenty-twenty-two. And then we're gonna also look at what's on the horizon and how we will possibly be spending some of these surpluses that we're looking to see.
And Rob, are you at this point seeing that there might be funds to contribute to that open space fund?
We'll talk about that, um, you'll, you'll see a pretty daunting list that's coming up. So, um, again, that will be the board's decision as to whether they wanna place anything there and how much they might wanna place there. But we did talk about seeing the full picture before you do and, uh, and you will. Um, so, uh, going to the highway and the refuse funds, um, the highway fund, the revenue was up a little over three percent. Um, we did get about thirty-three percent more chip funding from the state than we had anticipated. Um, there was another program that they added this year that gave us an additional amount. You'll see interest earnings was something that was up again across the board. Um, and we did get some, we started to get some FEMA reimbursements from, uh, ESIA SN. Um, so that's what that is, uh, the seventy-three thousand dollars. On the expense side, we had a pretty light year last year, I'm not gonna say anything about this year, but in twenty-twenty-two, uh, snow costs, snow removal costs were down versus budget. The overtime, uh, about nine percent and the salt about four point six nine percent, so, um, that's kind of a moving target. We have left that steady in the budget over the last probably five years or so, some years we hit it, some years we miss it. This was a good year for us, um, knock on wood, we'll hope twenty-twenty-three will be as well. Um, employee benefits, following the trend from the general fund, those were also down about one point four nine percent. And road paving is up, uh, about twenty-one percent. So we kind of had a list of roads that we wanted to pave going into the year. And, uh, one of the items that increased drastically in pricing throughout the year, actually was week by week. Um, starting in the spring was road paving and, um, we, we kind of had a sense that we would have a surplus. And we knew we were gonna get a little bit more money from the state at that point, so we went ahead and kept with our road paving, um, plan. Rather than scale it back to fit what we had in the budget. So we went ahead and kept with our road paving plan, rather than scale it back to fit what we had in the budget. We kind of still paved what we had anticipated paving. Jill, do you know the exact amount? It was around seven miles or something to that effect? Yeah, so, you know, we kind of, we made that decision. It's not gonna hurt us financially to do that. We are over budget in that line, and we will move some contingency funds towards that, but, you know, I think we thought that was the right decision at the time. Refuse and recycling, also some good news there. On the revenue side, we did get quite a bit more compost and mold sales than we thought. I think we probably had a lot more yard waste and debris that was processed and then turned around and sold. And we had some good news on the expense side there. The transfer site charges were actually down about sixteen percent. So that's a moving target. We never know exactly how much we're gonna collect. That's based on exactly what's dropped off at the transfer site, so that was good. So in both the highway fund and the refuse fund, we had allocated fund balance. If you remember, the refuse fund, because of the contract being renegotiated at a much larger rate, we had a couple of years' cycle of allocating fund balance, rather large amounts of fund balance. So the good news there is we'll still use fund balance from the year, but it'll be about a hundred thousand dollars less than we were anticipating, so that's good news. Looking at the water fund, we had, anybody that irrigation system knows, we had an extremely dry summer last summer. So when that happens, we sell a lot more water, and it means more revenue for the town. So again, interest earnings, like the other funds, with the fund balance we have in water, interest earnings were up significantly versus the budget. This water sales, the commercial sales were up about twenty-eight percent versus budget, and that includes Hudson Hills, that includes Whipperwell Country Com, I think. Hudson Hills had one month over the summer, I think it was about a hundred thousand dollar water bill, so. The residential sales were up a little over, little under seven percent. On the expense side, you're gonna see some of the costs that are gonna rise with the increased consumption, like the variable cost of water and the power at the water treatment plant, those are up. Variable cost of water, we were pretty close to the budget, just about one percent off. The power for the water treatment plant, just kind of like the utilities for other town buildings, that was up about fifty percent. And I think the board recalls, we had to go back to the board a couple of times for treatment plant chemicals, where in the middle of the contract, they literally would not honor our price anymore for some of the important chemicals that we needed. The cost of water for excess per capita was up close to thirty percent. And then a couple of other items, the standby generator was two hundred and twenty-four thousand. We ended up paying for twenty-twenty-two after our generator exploded. And we did refund a surplus from the prior year to the village of Pleasantville, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's twenty-twenty-two. We'll have the audited figures probably in late May or early June, and at that point, we'll talk about the fund balance and what we might want to allocate. So now I'll move on to some of the capital projects we have. So first, the good news, these are all projects that we have confirmed grant funding for. You see, they're all pretty pricey projects, and we were able to secure funding at least up to ninety percent. You see, at the far right column, cost to town of Newcastle, we're hoping that becomes a hundred percent. Most times it does for those FEMA projects. If the federal government doesn't kick in a hundred, right now, they're at ninety percent. A lot of times, the state will kick in that ten percent, so. But that's kind of the outside cost that could be, that the town could incur. So I think it was ESIAAS that knocked our pedestrian bridge out on Route one twenty. We're in the process of having that repaired, and that's a FEMA project. Shedd Road, that road got, part of that road got washed away. Don't recall the storm. It was this year, I think. That was Ida, I can't recall. But it was another one of the storms, and that's FEMA and East of Hudson are giving us money for that. The water main replacement, we have four different roads that we're replacing water main on. That's what we're gonna use, our ARPA funds that we received. They came out after COVID. Each municipality in the country received ARPA funds. That's what we have allocated ours to. Byram Lake Road culvert, that needs to be replaced. That was another washout from one of the storms. That's coming from FEMA. And the Upper Minkle Dam, talked about it every years and years of decommissioning. I think that's finally gonna happen this year. We've secured funding from Westchester County and FEMA for the full amount of that project.
Great.
So that's the goodness, and we're out there working. Sabrina's department, Sabrina Kellum, they're working pretty hard, helping us to secure these grants, and that's very important to do these projects. Next list, not as fun. Most of these are projects that we're paying for right now, at least the majority of ourselves. And what I've kind of tentatively listed is if we were to bond for all of these and not use any fund balance, this could be potentially what the cost is, and just looking down some of these, and a lot of these are back of the envelope estimates. We know there are projects that are out there. We know they have to be done. Some, we've had engineering studies, some we're not that, that far yet. So just going down from the top, we still have yet to close out the downtown hamlet. We have some engineering issues and some things that need to be cleared up with that, but we do know that project was overspent, and we will have to cover the remainder of that. We have the Millwood Sidewalk project that we had funds, multimodal funds that we reallocated from several years ago, when we were gonna put a sidewalk on one seventeen and realized we couldn't do it. We shifted those funds to Millwood Sidewalk, but unfortunately, as that project has gone along, we've incurred cost overruns there, and we're gonna end up having to probably borrow some more money for that one, too. The community center roof, that's already been completed. We paid for out of fund balance, but we'll end up having to borrow for that. DPW fuel tanks, again, another project that we borrowed money several years ago for. That cost came in about two hundred and fifty thousand over what we had borrowed before. Millwood Park, those are the lights. We had a SAM grant from, I think that was Senator Harman. Yeah. So we had a SAM grant there, so we had some of that funded. That was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Two hundred and fifty is the excess cost beyond that that we have to fund. So anything highlighted in dark are projects that have already either finished or have begun. Couple of items that are in the planning stages, the HVAC here at Town Hall. If you spend any time here, you know it's pretty inefficient, and I think it's about thirty years old. So we're, we're, Walter's keeping it together with, I don't know what, Svetin Blue, but, but that'll probably have to be addressed. The firearms at both Town Hall and DPW have to be replaced, so those are next up on our list. So not to go through everything, but this is, this is a list of what we're looking for. And so when I talk about fund balance, the good news, it's great. The news for twenty-two is very, very good, and you'll see that in May. What's on the horizon is, will be challenging. So, you know, we'll, I don't have firm numbers for a lot of these projects. I anticipate going out to bond at the end of this year. We have typically gone out to bond anywhere between four and five years. We last borrowed in twenty-eighteen. So we will probably have to borrow this year. I will say, though, that in spite of what you're seeing, interest rates on the, probably the retail, the home mortgage side, retail bond rates are not crazy, fortunately. So I've seen a rate sheet in the last couple of weeks, and they're in about the three to three and a half percent range, which we've had them at two and a half, so that's not.
And some of these projects, I know, you know, I don't know if the board knows, actually. So Congressman Lawler called us and arranged a meeting and wanted to know what projects we were looking for funding for, and we gave them a list, and a number of those are on them. So hopefully, some of that money will actually come through.
Yep.
I know he was appalled that the amount of money we're spending on our generator for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant.
Appalled, too.
Yeah, and we, we talked about a number, specifically, there's water projects. So hopefully, some of that money will, will come through and decrease.
When did that happen?
That was a couple of weeks ago. A couple of weeks ago, I think.
I don't think we knew about that.
No, I don't think, it wasn't with the board. It was just a meeting with Angel.
Okay, okay, good to know.
Yeah, two weeks ago, maybe.
Rob, did you send us this presentation?
I didn't, but I can.
Okay, because over here, probably Holly and Ally, maybe Lisa could see it, but I can't see. So for those of us back here.
Absolutely, I can send it to you.
I, I was listening to you carefully, but if we have to make decisions.
Yeah, yeah, no, no decisions imminent, and obviously, once we get to that decision stage, I'll, I'll give you more information. And we sent Jeremy, we're on the board before, in twenty-eighteen, when we borrowed, and I laid out a plan to the board. We borrowed, we had debt service, and we used allocations of fund balance to, to pay that debt service, and I anticipate doing something similar to that. It was a multi-year plan. I actually had it up through twenty-twenty-three, figuring this would be about when we would borrow again, so I will update that when that time comes and definitely keep you informed on how we're gonna pay for that. But to Lisa's point, we are definitely, unfortunately, I think we got some bad news on a couple of these that we applied for that, that we didn't get. And I think, I think, Jill, that it didn't, it looked like our application was fine, that just the pot of money ran out, if I, if I was reading that correctly. So there wasn't anything wrong with how we applied for it. It just, there wasn't any money left. So, you know, we're diligent about that. Sabrina keeps looking. Each year, we review the consolidated funding app to see if there's anything that we applied for. We've kept in touch. That, that was nice to hear from Congressman Lawler, to have him reach out to us and, you know, inquire. And it's great, you know, Assemblyman Birdick's been very helpful. Peter Harden's been very helpful. So, you know, we've got a lot of help there, and, you know, we'll, we'll continue to look for money.
The, the challenge to, for everyone is, is that the CFA projects change from year to year. So it's not like, you know, one year we apply for it, and it's like, oh, darn, we didn't get it. We'll try it again next year. Next year, they take and they shift the focus ever so slightly, so your project no longer qualifies. So you end up having to go through your list of basically shovel-ready projects, just trying to figure out, you know, which one fits into that square peg, you know. Fast, so it's a challenge, but, you know, we've certainly been working on it with some degree of success, so. Certainly, with the FEMA things, far more so than anything else.
And the last slide I have is, you're definitely not gonna be able to read that, and I will forward that to the board, but it's my cash flow analysis for the year, and it's just kind of how I monitor, and it's, it's not an exact science. I, I do put a lot of work into it to determine, but basically, it helps me to see the ebbs and flows of the cash coming in and out of the town, because we do have a lot of cash coming through the town. We, we do collect property taxes for the schools and for the county, and so that money comes through us and it goes back out. So, you know, we've got to make sure we have cash, and in fact, on April fifth, we'll make the schools whole, even though we won't be a hundred percent collected. So I do have to say, I think we're as close as we've been in many years. I think the last I looked, we were only about eight hundred thousand short, and we're typically at least a million, so. That's money we unfortunately have to advance to schools, and it's the same situation with the county. We have to make them whole in October as well. So, you know, this time of year, actually, March is, is our lowest month, lowest cash flow month of the year, because we haven't started collecting property taxes yet. So basically, and, and we've had three months of the year, so we're kind of living off our fund balance, which, that's okay, because we have a fund balance. Some, some aren't that fortunate. Some people have to take out tax anticipation, anticipation notes or, or short-term borrowing. We've never had to do that, and I don't anticipate having to do that. But when I forward this to you, you will see in great detail that I'm on top of your money.
Do you get any funding from, from the schools?
John, we're not asking questions.
We don't ask questions.
Yeah, sorry, it's a word session.
Just saying, why are you doing something for the schools that they don't pay you for?
Because we're required.
So, Rob, could you take a minute and just, I, I know you assured the board, but just to assure the public that though we had monies in Silicon Valley Bank, that they, I'm sorry, Signature Bank, that they have all, everything's been recouped and, and.
Yeah, that's correct. Unfortunately, Sunday night, as I was reading through the news, I saw the horrible news that Signature Bank was taken over by the feds, and unfortunately, we had some of our investments in that bank. So on the good news side is they paid a tremendous amount of interest this year, and we made a lot of interest in the last year or so from them. The bad news is we won't be doing business with them anymore. We did pull all our money out of there. Did have a conversation with the auditor on Monday, and he suggested that, and I concurred with him, so we did take our money out of there. We do have another investment consortium that we'll put it in that's paying good dividends. So just to remind the board, too, this very, the depositories that I can put money in for the town are, are, the laws require them to be very restrictive. So I'm not able to invest money in the stock market even. It's just very CDs and investment banks, et cetera. And any, any depository that does business with the municipality has to fully collateralize all of the funds. So we were never at risk. You know, you've heard with Silicon Valley, you heard with Signature, if you had more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we did, it wasn't FDIC insured, and that's correct. But that's why all these other depositories have collateral requirements. We receive collateral statements on a monthly basis, and it's actually one of the focuses of the audit. They actually review all our collateral statements to make sure that we have collateral for all our funds. And they're required to collateralize us at a hundred and two percent. So in the event that, that there's a deposit in, throughout the day, that they don't capture, I, I think they do the analysis at the end of each business day and collateralize you at the beginning of the next morning for the amount that you closed the prior business day with, so. So that was never at risk, but disconcerting nonetheless, so we'll, we'll look for another place for that money.
Okay, thank you for being on top of that.
Sure.
All right, any questions from anyone on the board, other than to email that to us?
I will.
And we're gonna put it in the newsletter, a link to that, if that's okay as well.
Sure, that's fine.
All right, thank you. All right, so next up, we are going to speak about our CSEA fact-finding recommendation, and Ally?
So due to a conflict, I have recused myself from CSEA negotiations.
So don't, you don't have to go too far, though. All right, thank you. So do you want to start, or am I gonna, I'm gonna, well, tonight, we're gonna be discussing the town's negotiations with our Civil Service Employees Association. The collective bargaining agreement, as people may or may not know, between the town and the CSEA expired on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. We have been negotiating with the, the union since then, but we've been unsuccessful in negotiating a new successor agreement. So by law, on March first, twenty-twenty-three, we went to a neutral fact-finder, both parties appointed by the New York State Public Employment Relations Board, and he, he issued his recommendations, actually, on, on March first for a successor agreement. And a summary of the fact-finder's recommendations are as follows. The compensation shall be amended so that effective January one, twenty-twenty-one, current CSEA members will receive a one-time one point five percent lump sum payment. Also, effective January first, twenty-twenty-two, CSEA members shall receive a two percent salary increase with retroactive payments made to current CSEA members. Effective January first, twenty-twenty-three, CSEA members shall receive a two point two five percent salary increase. Effective January first, twenty-twenty-four, they shall receive a two point two five percent salary increase. And that two point five percent salary increase will also occur on January first, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, and twenty-twenty-seven. Then longevity payments shall be amended as follows. Effective January first, twenty-twenty-three, they'll be increased by one hundred and fifty dollars across all longevity steps. And effective January first, twenty-twenty-four, longevity. And effective January 1st, 2024, longevity payment shall be increased by $50 across all longevity steps, and then increased again by $50 across all longevity steps on January 1st, 2025. Three, the town shall provide employees with an additional in lieu of day for Juneteenth, which shall convert to sick time if not utilized. This is in lieu, this in lieu of day shall be converted into an additional holiday if town hall is required to be closed on that day. Four, CSEA members shall be entitled to cash, to cash in up to three unused vacation days from their 2021 vacation approvals. Five, home confinement policies shall be implemented during an employee's working hours while that employee is utilizing either sick leave or workers' comp leave, subject to specific enumerated exceptions. Six, employees shall be entitled to out-of-title pay when required to perform the duties of a higher job classification for at least three consecutive workdays, except for those employees working during an emergency weather event, whereby such employee will be compensated for all time worked at that higher job classification. Seven, a revised alcohol and drug testing policy shall be implemented, which includes but is not limited to a revised disciplinary procedure. So at this point, I would like to poll the town board members who are not recused, concerning whether they are in agreement to accept this fact-finder's recommendation in its entirety. So Holly?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Vicky?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Jeremy?
In agreement as well.
Perfect, as am I. And unfortunately, since the town has not heard back from the CSEA concerning whether it is willing to accept the recommendations of the fact-finder, the town is prepared to continue with the dispute resolution process provided for in the Taylor Law. In accordance with Taylor Law, Section 209.3E, I have submitted a copy of the findings of fact and recommendations of the fact-finder, together with my recommendations for settling the dispute to the town board. I did that earlier this week, and I'm going to actually read, so hang in there, my recommendation letter to the town board, and that is as follows. So I sent this on, on March 13th. The collective bargaining agreement, and this was me to the town board, with the exception of Councilwoman Shemtah. The collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Civil Service Employees Association, the CSEA, expired on December 31st, 2020. As discussed herein, the town and the CSEA have attempted to negotiate a new agreement since June of 2020, and ultimately, having failed to reach an agreement, the parties submitted their dispute to fact-finding. After a hearing before fact-finder Tom Linden on March 1st, 2023, the fact-finder issued his recommendations for a successor agreement. A copy of the fact-finder's recommendation is attached here, too. Pursuant to Taylor Law, Section 209.3E, I submit that the town board should adopt the fact-finder's recommendations for the reasons set forth herein. A, bargaining history. Amidst the uncertainty of the COVID-19 pandemic, on June 26, 2020, the CSEA demanded to begin negotiations concerning a new contract. The parties met approximately eight times between October 29th, 2020, and March 25th, 2021. At the conclusion of these negotiation sessions, the parties came to a tentative agreement on March 25th, 2021, which was then reduced to writing. On June 1st, 2021, the bargaining teams for both the town and the CSEA signed a memorandum of agreement, which I'm defining here as the 2021 MOA. Unfortunately, the CSEA membership rejected the 2021 MOA. Thereafter, impasse was declared, and the parties engaged in mediation between February 2022 and July 2022. Mediation was likewise unsuccessful, and the parties proceeded to fact-finding in November 2022. Despite the fact-finder being appointed by the New York State Public Employment Relations Board, the parties continued to engage in negotiations for a successor agreement. And on or about November 18th, 2022, the parties came to a second tentative agreement, which was then reduced to writing the 2022 MOA. Unfortunately, again, the CSEA membership rejected the 2022 MOA. As such, the parties proceeded to a fact-finding hearing. The hearing was then conducted before, excuse me, fact-finder Tom Linden on January 5th, 2023. On March 1st, 2023, the fact-finder issued his recommendations that I just discussed for a successor collective bargaining agreement. The fact-finder recommended that the 2022 MOA be implemented with three modifications. One, that the contract be extended by two years through 2027, with salary increases, as I just discussed, of 2.5% in both 2026 and 2027. Two, that the 1.50% lump sum payments still be provided to current unit members for 2021. Three, that the alcohol, marijuana, and drug testing policies disciplinary section be amended by providing that for a first offense, a 20-day suspension without pay be implemented, along with a mandatory completion of an employee assistance program. And for a second offense, the town could proceed with disciplinary charges in accordance with Section 75 of the Civil Service Law. And I attached a copy of the 2022 MOA to my letter. Though the fact-finder's recommendations differ from the town's bargain for 2022 MOA, the independent fact-finder found them to be reasonable in light of the surrounding circumstances. Indeed, the salary increases recommended by the fact-finder are in line with salary increases provided to similar bargaining units in other towns in Westchester County. Based on the foregoing, I submit that the board should adopt the fact-finder's recommendation. And just as an aside, I wrote that the CSEA members in Newcastle are already one of the highest, if not the highest, paid employee groups as compared to similar employees in all of the other towns in Westchester County. Similarly, CSEA members currently receive generous longevity payments over a 25-year career in comparison to similar bargaining units in other towns in Westchester County. So please note that in the event that either the CSEA or the town do not agree to the fact-finder's recommendations that I am recommending today, in addition to my recommendations submitted to the town board set forth herein, the CSEA may submit to the town board its recommendations for settling the dispute. The town board or a duly authorized committee thereof must then set and conduct a public hearing at which the parties must explain their positions with respect to the fact-finder's recommendation. Thereafter, the town board must take such actions as it deems to be in the public interest, including the interests of the public employees involved, by imposing a settlement of the negotiations dispute for a period of one year. However, under the Tri-Borough Amendment to the Taylor Law, in such circumstances, the town board may not change any terms of the expired collective bargaining agreement without the consent of the CSEA, including but not limited to S. So lastly, given that the town board, as we polled, has agreed to these recommendations, I would like to set a hearing, which shall be conducted in public for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at 7:15 PM. At such hearing, the parties will be required to explain their positions with respect to the fact-finder's recommendations. All right, anyone have any questions on that? Okay, so we'll move on. Anything, anything further from council?
We'll proceed on Tuesday.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, now I'd like to stop speaking, and we're going to consider an applica-, oh, Ally, yes, come back. We're going to consider an application for a filming permit and waiver for 50 overlook. Jill or Ed, do you want to give us a little background on that?
So we have been approached by a filming company that is interested in filming for a significant number of days at 50 overlook in Austin, which is the town of Newcastle. The board is of course aware of the fact that we have film ordinance within town, and pursuant to that, filming is only allowed for seven days within the 12-month period. The property has already met that seven-day period. And so the individuals that are interested in coming in to talk to us have, have asked for a couple of different waivers. First waiver is that they're looking for us to take and actually waive this, that seven-day timeframe within the 12-month period, and also noise ordinances. So, and also the, within our film ordinance, there are certain times within which filming would be allowed. That waiver as well. So I know that they're here tonight. Vanessa, is that you?
Yeah, that's me.
Come on up, come on up.
I also printed out some stuff, if you guys wanted it for reference.
Sure.
Just taking it off, just to show for the record.
Sure, yeah. My name's Vanessa Van Orm. I'm the Assistant Location Manager for Cold Harbor, which is the working title for Severance, season two. I hope I printed it off, I wasn't really sure.
I don't know if she's.
Okay, here we go. Yes.
If you can give that extra to Christine right there.
Thank you.
Do you need a copy? You're okay.
Okay, I have, I have looked at them a lot.
You can borrow it back.
Oh, okay. Actually, I can pull it up on my phone. Yeah, or you just give it at the end? So we are looking to film at 50 overlook road. It was actually hand-selected by Ben Stiller, who is the director for Severance. He did last season, and he's also doing this season as well. We have reached an agreement with 50 overlook road, and they are aware of our filming and in support of it. When I had initially reached out to Ms. Shapiro regarding the film permit, I was informed that there was, 50 overlook had already used their seven days, which we were not aware of. I then proceeded to speak to the five neighbors that are directly next to 50 overlook, because it's kind of, if you look, there's a map. Where's the second one? On the second page. It's kind of set back from everyone. It's not like, there are neighbors, obviously, but it's not very close neighbors. Anyway, I've spoken to all five of the direct neighbors, and they're aware of our filming, and they are being compensated for our presence during our time of being there.
So can we assume by that that they are also in favor of you filming?
Yes, I would assume so. They're all very excited. They're also all fans of the show, which.
Did you, did you provide the board with copies of their consents?
I did, yes. They're all in there. I didn't do one for 50 overlook, but they are onboard.
Do they get a notice that this is going on, and that they have the opportunity to come and speak to us?
I didn't know that they resisted.
I'm asking Jill.
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Because I think that would be important.
But they, it seems like they're all signing consents.
Oh, okay, I just heard people say, I assume that they.
No, the consents are in here, I think.
Yeah, they're, they're in there. They're all there.
Okay, so there's a consent to the waivers.
Or just consents to like us filming for when we've like told them that we were planning to come film. So our current filming date, which is actually, it's actually shifted. We've reduced our number of filming days to just two, as opposed to three. And we've also reduced the amount of prep days that we would need in order to get the home ready for our set. So it's now seven days of prep with about a week of rehearsal. And then it's about five days of restoring the home back to its natural, original state. You know, for prep and wrap, it's obviously, I think more like independent contractors. They're all under our payroll. They're all our crew members, union crew members. But there's obviously not as many people when it comes to an active day of filming. And they will, all the vehicles we park on private driveways, either on 50 overlook or with the five neighbors, which they are all made aware, and they know the usage of their driveway of like our purposes.
Excuse me, I, I may also, Vanessa has spoken with our Chief of Police.
Yes.
Regarding traffic and traffic flow on the property, there will be an officer there during all activities. And the chief has approved the plan for the traffic and parking.
Are we approving this today?
So let me answer your question. In terms of noise.
Yes.
What are you anticipating with noise? And have you notified these neighbors? Because I don't, I don't know.
Yes, they're all aware of the noise. We will be parking a tractor generator on 48 overlook. And that is about 50 decibels at 25 feet. It's a, it's a movie quality generator. It's supposed to be parked pretty close, that way you can't hear it. Obviously, like, it was, that, that location was specifically picked by our electricians, and they know like what's good for noise issues.
Is that camper, is that what you're referring to on your map?
No, that's actually like a camper that would fit in the driveway, which is for one of the actors. The generator would go right next to it. And then that neighbor is aware of what's going in his driveway, and he is also electing to potentially put himself up for the evening.
Did we, did we get this in the backup documents? Was this the first time?
No, this is the first time I've seen this.
So we're, okay, so we have a number of pages here. I'm just concerned we're being asked to approve something that we're just seeing.
Most of it was in the backup.
That's what I'm asking. I hadn't, I hadn't seen.
I haven't seen the map.
I haven't seen all of this. Some of this in there, but not this.
Application, but I think.
Right, but not all of.
No, no, certainly not.
It's just the application.
So. It's the application, it's the, it's the waivers from the neighbors.
Okay, sorry, and that's on page 31?
Yeah, 31 to 45, 46. And Jill, do we think that 200 feet from 50 overlook is, is an appropriate distance for waivers, for the neighbors?
I also took all of the, I did all of overlook road.
Okay.
So if you look on page.
Yeah.
It's because it's wooded property that's in Yorktown.
Yeah, so I went all the way from, well, let's say 43 overlook, all the way down to 22 Lakeway Road. And I just did a general resident letter notifying and left my phone number on it, stating if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to me. And I haven't received a phone call from anyone.
So we don't, we don't have an answer from them?
Well, we have an, I have answers from the five neighbors that are like directly next to the home, the homes that are along overlook road that kind of trickle out. I have not received a phone call, but they've all been given a letter stating it, which I think I have a letter in here.
The reason why I asked, I just went to Google Maps and looking at 48 overlook to 44 overlook, it's 210 feet, that, that's not a direct route. That's not, that's a crow flies. It's sort of shorter as a crow flies. So we're NA for 44. What type of decibels are we talking about 100 feet away? Is it going to be disturbing those 44?
No, they wouldn't hear it.
And the staging that would impact them, 48? I'm just, I'm just looking at.
For 48, we have an agreement with them.
No, no, I understand that. My point being that if you're staging a generator at 48, right? And you said at, how, at 50 feet, it was 200, was the distance you said?
At 25 feet, it's 50 decibels.
So just curious, what's at a double or triple that?
You can't hear it. It's like, yeah, it's, it's very silent.
I think he's asking if we have the approval of 48 overlook and 46, do we need the approval of 44? It's kind of listed as an NA here.
I think the reason why it was just listed as an NA. There's nothing there. It's just, it's just a home. Like, we're not planning to put anything like by their house.
But can they hear it? We're concerned that.
Lighting.
Right, there's lighting, there's, could be noise, and certainly, you know, additional traffic on that road.
Sure, of course.
Could still impact them.
There wouldn't be any lighting. All the lighting would be over towards 50 overlook on the actual property. And then in terms of noise, if there were any noise, obviously, you know, I can reach out to them and, you know, discuss with them and do some sort of compensation for any noise disturbance that they potentially could have.
Okay.
So the waivers for how many extra days?
Two, well, plus.
Well, so we are requesting 13 days of prep, which are only usually Monday through Friday.
Two of filming.
Two of actual filming, correct. We've filmed in neighborhoods before that are very similar to 50 overlook, like in Pleasantville. We filmed the first season, all of the neighbors. It's a very tight-knit community as well, and they, you know, we had a very successful shoot, season one, and they welcomed us back graciously for season two, and are very excited for us to return. We've done it in Nyack. We've done it in Nyack, you know, we film in neighborhoods very often, and we try to take care of the neighbors as best as possible, and understand that it is a circus that comes through, but, you know, we try to make it up on circus.
And what are the hours?
What are the hours, sorry to ask, because like, I just wanna hurry up and not go through all of.
Sure, yeah, so for, on prep days, it's eight AM to six PM, it's typical like a ten hour day. Um, and then for our filming, uh, there, we're doing ha- half overnight, or half during the day and half overnight, since they're, uh, mostly night scenes, so.
What are the hours?
Uh, they're approximately twelve PM to like three AM or four AM.
And everyone who signed the waiver knows those hours?
They do.
Yes, I really wish you would have put the, put that on it, um, yeah.
Four AM, so those are for two days?
Correct, yep, so it's Wednesday, April fifth, and then also Thursday, April sixth.
It would have been good if the hours were on the waivers.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I can also revise and do like another one as well. Um, and then on their actual physical agreements for their compensation, it has the hours listed.
Okay, well, we don't need to know the compensation, but we do need to know that they're aware of it. Um, it, it is interesting that, that other film companies that have gone through there have gotten petitions from all the neighbors on the block, not just some of them, um, because they're all gonna be impacted by at least traffic.
Okay.
That's why I have no objection to it, it, I think it's great that you wanna come here, and it's good for the community, generally speaking, but I would feel more comfortable if we can just confirm, especially if a week's not gonna make a difference, if we can just confirm that those other neighbors make another effort to reach out to them, so at least we can say that there was multiple efforts to advise them, and that they understand a little bit more detail what's gonna happen. If there's no objection, I, I would have no objection.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, we're happy to, you know, reflyer and, uh.
I don't want someone knocking on our proverbial door, or literally our glass door out there saying, you didn't, we didn't know, we didn't know, why'd you do this?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of that poor gentleman who came to us with a photographic, and we just don't want that.
We had someone who was very upset about some filming nearby is.
They were miserable.
God, yeah.
No, I understand, it's, we wanna make sure that everyone.
Yeah, we also had a, uh, filming on Heath Cross, if you recall, and, uh, so.
So, if there's approval, I'm on board.
I, I, as am I.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's, that would be my only question, is to make sure that all of the neighbors are fully aware of what they're, um, saying, okay to.
Sure.
So, would you be, and you wanted to start when?
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Originally, we're gonna start, hoping to start tomorrow, but, um, just due to everything, and we have our own scheduling issues, so we've just asked to push to Monday.
So, um.
Wait, I just one more question, how do you get consent from the neighbors, do they sign something?
There's, they're right here.
Okay.
Right here, sign.
Those are, okay.
But I would, in, in the interest of time, because I, I, I understand the constraints that you have, if it was not feasible to, to have them re-sign waivers with the dates on it, if you even had their email addresses and sent an email to all of them, and copied the town board, and we got approval, email approval from them, then, yes, I know the dates and I'm okay with it, I think I, I could get comfortable with that.
But they would, they would need the emails, though.
Could you?
I have all of their contact information.
Right.
Oh, you do it also?
Could, could we, could we accept this, and, uh, subject to the, the, the one of the, Monday?
I, I, I don't know that all the neighbors have been consulted, and that concerns me.
So the five neighbors have like, that are going to be the most impacted, are all, have been all communicated with, I have their emails, I know them on like a first-name basis, um, which I, you know, that's very easy to get a re-signature for the letter. I can also submit a different resident notification letter for the homes that will be affected with more vehicular traffic on the road, stating the, um, the filming dates and our approximate times, and then I can either ask them to sign, which, you know, I'll just have someone camp out until they come home for a signature, or I can, you know, just.
I, I think that would be better, if you, if you can do that, um, and then scan it and email it to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think the board needs to have, um, have signatures from the entire block.
If that's possible, and then legally, then, since we don't meet again before Monday, assuming we get all that this week, can we kind of pull the board and then, then ratify it on Tuesday?
Well, I.
I know, because it wasn't Monday.
Tuesday's a day too late, right?
Yeah.
So what we could do is, the resolution that's in the packet, we could just tweak it and indicate that the town administrator, the compliance will be subject to, um, approval by the town administrator.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just concerned that, um, I mean, I have a neighbor on the phone who's texting me feverishly as we speak. Do you want to open it up to them and allow them to speak? Um, I'm just, you know, we're requesting all neighbors, you know, be notified and sign off on it, right?
Yes. But certainly, if the neighbor has a question right now, I would like to hear it, since this is something we're gonna consider tonight, if they wanna dial in.
Okay, Carrie, you wanna open it for Nicole? Hi, Nicole.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So you had.
Okay, so I, I wanna start by saying that I am not opposed to this, uh, request, the request for the waiver, but, um, you know, I think we need to establish some parameters, because the house at fifty overlook, the Lus House, which is a very desirable house for film companies, and I don't think anybody on overlook road does object, but the last film company that we embraced had, uh, were required to have a petition signed from everybody from my house, thirty nine, uh, down to fifty and the, uh, house next to them.
Well, that's what we were talking about, Nicole, having not necessarily a petition, but having then sign a waiver.
Okay, but not just the five houses around.
The block, right.
The whole block. The other thing, I was just curious what, um, and I'm sorry, I didn't get her name, what she means by compensation, um. Is that compensation for cars parking in the driveway? Is that compensation for noise, what is that compensation for?
Yeah.
The last, the last film company parked their cars, and, and as I say, I don't have a particular, you know, opinion on this, the last film company, um, found it better for them to park their trucks in the parking lot at the railroad station and shuttle their staff over, um, as, as opposed to asking all of the neighbors, including myself, if they could rent our driveways. So I'm just, I'm wondering what that compensation entails.
Yeah, so I don't know that we necessarily wanna get into the contract terms between the production company and the individual neighbors. Um, I, I think suffice it to say, if they, if they consent to this, I'm sure if, if their property is being used, they're being appropriately, uh, compensated.
We can discuss, like, we'll come by tomorrow with a letter, and we can discuss any of your concerns.
So, did you hear that, Vanessa said she will come by tomorrow with a letter and discuss.
Her name's Nicole Misses.
You know what, I, I'm not, I, it's not that I wanna get into information about the contract with neighbors, what I wa, I, I'm just wanna be clear that when, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, says the neighbors are being constant compensated, what are they being compensated for? I don't care how much, are they being compensated for noise?
I, I think they're being compensated as they deem appropriate.
For, for the usage of their driveways, or using their driveways.
For the uses of their driveways.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, then, I just think you need, you just need to get.
All right, thank you, Nicole.
Okay.
They're gonna come by your house.
Okay. Uh, you know what, I wanna tell you something, I actually helped write the petition for the last film company to get everybody's signature.
Maybe you and I.
So I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed, I just want clarification. And I think going forward, given that this house is going to be used for film companies going forward, I don't know if everybody's aware of what the Lus House is.
Yeah, we are, we are.
We need, you know, there needs to be something, you know, sta, some standard protocol, so when the next film company comes in, you say, this is what you need to do, this is what we expect, what are you gonna do, et cetera.
Yeah.
So we, we do have standard protocols, what's being asked here is, is a waiver, um, to some of those, but, uh, you know, certainly I think they should be getting signatures from everyone on the block.
Yeah, I'd be okay if we have clear consent from, from all the.
So I think your idea, Ed, and it seems like that's the consensus here, your idea of making it subject to.
Yeah.
Would be fine.
Yeah.
So basically, we're gonna resolve that we, we are going to, you know, adopt the resolution subject to you obtaining all of those consents as determined by our town administrator. So that way, we will have approved it tonight, but Jill has the final sign off, uh, once you get those.
Right, so I'm gonna need the prep dates, and then the hours on the prep dates, and also the hours on the film dates, okay? It's, you could just tell me it's the, the three, whatever it is, but it should be reflected on the, um, on the consents.
Okay.
And maybe my recommendation would be, if you're redrafting this waiver, maybe send it over to Jill, just so she can look at it and say it looks good, so that it just saves you time from having to do it again.
Sure, yeah.
Is there clarity on the additional consents that we're asking for, either by address, or do we otherwise know who we're talking about?
Is it the list that I have on, uh, like, is, does that suffice?
All the NAs?
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
I think so.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and, um.
Actually, I, I'm sorry, one quick question.
Yeah.
Um, so all of the houses along the route to get there, um, that's kind of often very main thoroughfare, have they been alerted that there will be increased traffic?
Um, which, I'm not like local to the area, so I'm not really sure what street road that is, um.
Um, so I don't have like the street map, but, um, is Pines, is like Pines Bridge that you turn off of?
I, I, I don't know that everyone needs to be notified that some trucks are gonna come down there. I think that road definitely, because they'll be parking and turning around, and, but I, I, I don't know that we need to notify, you know, the entire West End that trucks may be coming through.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, I was thinking about just like this, this neighborhood, you know, that, that needs like two streets, but we've just got most of them already, but.
Who's a question? No. I have not notified them, or if I, I can.
Okay, all right, so I think we're good?
Yeah.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just, if I have all of that approved, and I have the signatures, then we would be able to begin prep on Monday.
Yes.
So I will issue, if that's the case, then I will issue you the permit.
Great.
Okay, as I get on the document.
So, and you have all of Jill's contact information?
Yeah, we've been, we've been chatting.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so I think now we're moving to, uh, administrative items.
Um, so our administrative items this evening are, uh, two payment of claims, one for, uh, retro, um, for March eighth of twenty twenty three, the next was March fifteenth. Um, authorization to enter into an IMA with West Jersey County regarding our enhanced nine-one-one services, this is a renewal, um, something we do every several years. Next is authorization to attend a conference, that's for, um, for BARD, it's for a joint, the joint Woodworks Community Woodworks, rather. Uh, next is highway school, uh, so our Assistant General Foreman and our General Foreman, Bernie Riley and John Madurs, will be attending that. Authorization to attend, uh, to solicit bids to the woodwork treatment plant, um, for the emergency generator fuel tank replacement. Uh, this has got an estimated budget of like, uh, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, so this is just the tank replacement for the generator, not the actual generator. It's something that we had had planned before the generator, if we ever had trouble with the generator. Uh, next is authorization to, uh, purchase, uh, water maintenance materials, this is for gate mouths. Um, it's from COVID May, and it's a, uh, just shy of, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, just so the board's aware. Um, let's see, uh, authorization to, uh, share services of another, uh, New York State County regarding bids to purchase a dump truck. We're piggybacking on to One Daca County's, um, bid, so One Daca County went out for, uh, dump trucks, um, and because they, um, they got a competitive bid, other municipalities are able to basically take advantage of their good work, so we do this on a regular basis, we call it piggybacking. And as long as they did all the proper notices, we're allowed to, um, basically borrow their hard work and get the benefits of ordering a truck. Um, next is, we got a banner request for Community Day, it's coming on, uh, September ninth for twenty twenty three. We've got, uh, an award of the Buck Campus for Chapukawos, um, Chapukaw transportation, rather. Uh, we're getting a twenty twenty three bathroom trailer, um, it's gonna be just shy of nine thousand dollars from United Site, it's a next station bathroom trailer for camp. Um, next we've got, oh, no, um, we're still holding the change order for Michael there?
Yep.
Okay. Um, next, we've got a cash bond agreement for, um, a property on Seven Bridges Road, it's to guarantee some tree replacement. Um, and the next is, um, declaration of surplus materials, so it's a police car, a two thousand eighty Black Explorer. That's the preliminary step that we need to take in order to be able to sell something on that auction. Um, let's see. And, let's see, we're going to, um, I, I guess the other resolutions, we're just gonna, uh, we're gonna go through, Christine?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, that's it, any questions on the administrative items?
All right, um, so before we move to our resolutions, I just wanted to ask the board, one of our resolutions today, number eight, is an authorization to set for public hearing for the Recreation and Parks Master Plan. Um, I wanted to just see if the board wants to do that, it was gonna set it for April eighteenth, so we have plenty of time to look at the document for then.
And is there any issue with the fact that they haven't had a chance to review it before they set the public hearing? Otherwise, are we just gonna kick that resolution?
I think it's fine, I should have mentioned it earlier, I thought that it was in the packet. If the board's comfortable setting the public hearing, you're, that's your.
It's the same date we were gonna pick for next week.
I'm personally comfortable with it, I, I, I know the amount of work that went in that, I feel that, you know, it's appropriate to let, have, you know, solicit public comment on this. But, does anyone have an objection?
No.
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 Okay. All right, so then, uh, why don't we move to resolutions? Holly, you wanna start?
Absolutely.
Why don't you do page one, and then we'll, I'll, you'll do, et cetera.
I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents, two thousand twenty-two expenditures totaling one hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents, and twenty twenty-three expenditures totaling seven hundred and two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents, listed on the summary, AP check register, and detailed voucher detail reports, all dated March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents, two thousand twenty-two expenditures totaling three hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents, and twenty twenty-three expenditures totaling two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents, listed on the summary, pre-check writing report, and detailed voucher detail reports, all dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the change title for Miguel, Miguel Vargas, from seasonal engineering aid, um, zero five four seven dash zero one, to administrative intern, zero one six nine dash zero two, within the development department, at the rate of forty-five dollars per hour, effective retroactively to March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye. Do you want to keep by?
Uh, do you wanna go to the next one, Al?
Sure. I move to adopt the following resolution. Uh, the town board hereby appoints the following Diane Thaler, Sarah Finch, Jennifer Simon, Georgia Schwartz, Stella Schwartz, and Alita Cruz to the LGBTQ plus committee, effective March first, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt the following resolution, do you want me to read the whole thing of this one? Yeah. Whereas Casey Tab was a Chapukaw resident, beloved Horace Greeley student, and varsity soccer player who in twenty seventeen lost his valiant battle against pediatric brain cancer at the tender age of sixteen. And whereas the Tab family has been committed to youth soccer in the town of Newcastle, both at the ASO and high school levels, and whereas the loss of Casey was felt deeply throughout Newcastle and in the soccer community as a whole. And whereas the friends of Casey Tab submitted a request to the Recreation and Parks Commission and determined it met the criteria for the renaming of a recreation and parks facility, and provided a recommendation to the Newcastle Town Board. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby wholeheartedly supports this request and formally declares Upper Gedney Field be renamed Casey Tab Field. And be it further resolved that all expenses related to this dedication have been paid through fundraising by private entities, and as such, the Recreation and Parks Department shall take all necessary steps to organize the official dedication ceremony on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I move to authorize the.
Uh, I move to authorize the town controller to commit the amount of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars from the twenty twenty-two operating funds for the purpose of obtaining the property located at two twenty Joan Corwin Way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, okay, approval of the Newcastle and Onkysco Water Rents and tax liens. Um, I move to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that the attached schedule of charges for unpaid water for property shown on the tax rolls are hereby fixed and determined by the board and certified to the supervisor of the town of Newcastle. That such amounts are levied against the real property as set forth on the attached schedule, that the same be raised by tax upon the real property in the town of Newcastle liable therefore at that time and in the matter provided in the town law and Westchester County Code, and that the amount of such tax be stated in a separate column in the annual tax rolls of the town of Newcastle under a column entitled Water Rents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, can I just mention, on the previous resolution, the Casey Tab, the date was changed to April fourteenth? Oh, um, a a resolution was sent um late today, just changing the date for the ceremony to April fourteenth, so I'm.
So moved, so moved, again?
Well, I made that note, so I just wanted to make sure.
Just to announce it, and so you'll have it on your calendar, so if you have any confusion.
Okay, um, and authorization to set a public hearing on the Recreation and Parks Master Plan. I move to adopt the following resolution, um, let me see. Okay, it's not that long, uh, whereas the town board has received and reviewed a draft twenty twenty-three Recreation and Parks Master Plan, which updates the existing version of said master plan and reestablishes the town's goals and actionable objectives in light of current needs, resources, opportunities, and community input. And whereas pursuant to um, uh, six New York C R R, six paragraph six seventeen point five um, subsection C twenty-four and twenty-seven, adoption of the Recreation and Parks Master Plan is a type-two action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act for which no further action under SEFR is required. And uh, now therefore be it resolved that the town board schedules a public hearing on the Recreation and Parks Master Plan of the town of Newcastle for Tuesday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, as the town of Newcastle, at the town of Newcastle Town Hall at seven thirty PM, or as soon thereafter is reached on the town board agenda that evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jeremy?
All right, I'm gonna read most of this, because I think it's important that the community knows what we're doing, and it's not an actual vote to pass the legislation itself that relates to setting solely the public hearing on the proposed North Greeley Net Zero Carbon Legislation and to make referrals April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, whereas the town board is considering the adoption of a proposed amendment to chapter sixty, uh, which is a zoning of the town of town code, uh, also called the proposed local law, which was submitted to the town with various supporting materials in September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, that would establish a new special use permit for mixed-use residential buildings and meet certain green building standards. And whereas by resolution adopted number twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, the town board referred to revised version of the proposed local law to Westchester County and town of Newcastle Planning Boards, and declared its intention to serve as lead agency pursuant to SECR. And whereas on January tenth, twenty twenty-three, and the twenty-fourth, the town board and planning board held joint work sessions to discuss the proposed local law. Uh, whereas by resolution adopted February seventh, the town board from the four-member committee, that was both the the town board and the uh planning board, uh, for consideration. Whereas on February sixteenth, the working group uh held a duly-nosed public meeting to discuss these provisions. Whereas the town board has had an opportunity to review and discuss the proposed local law as revised in accordance with recommendations of that working group and town staff, and believes legislation should proceed to a public hearing, and again, this is not a vote to actually pass any legislation. Now therefore be resolved, the town board hereby refers the annexed proposed local law to the town of Newcastle Planning Board pursuant to town code sixty dash six hundred, and Westchester County Planning Board pursuant to General Municipal Law twenty-three nine M, and Westchester County Administrative Code, and be it further resolved that the town board schedules a public hearing on the proposed North Greeley Net Zero Carbon Legislation for Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at town of Newcastle Town Hall, seven thirty PM, or as soon as thereafter is reached on the town board agenda that evening.
Holly, you want a second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it back to me?
Thank you.
All right. I, I move to adopt the following resolution authorizing the acceptance of a cash bond, whereas.
Straight to the where, what, and these.
I can go, okay. Um.
Now there.
Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle hereby authorizes the acceptance of the aforementioned cash bond agreement. Be it further resolved, the town board and the town of Newcastle hereby authorizes the supervisor or her duly-authorized designee to sign the cash bond agreement along with all other documents necessary to effectuate the purpose of this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Ed, are there any changes to this resolution about um, film permit?
Yeah, um, we could just talk them in and after the, what's read, what's here is read.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, so I move to approve the waiver of the seven-day permit limitation set forth in town code section sixty-five dash dash six A, subject to the applicant's compliance with all of the mitigations as measured and measures described in this letter to the town administrator dated March first, twenty twenty-three, along with all town ordinances applicable, applicable to its activities, and.
Let me also offer, subject to the additional notice to the residents who've already signed waiver forms and subject to uh notice to the residents, I'm gonna just read them, okay? At the following addresses, uh, and the, they're all on overlook road, forty-four, forty-three, forty-one, forty, thirty-nine, thirty-six, thirty-five, thirty-two, twenty-nine, and twenty-five, and and in addition, twenty-two Lakeway Road, all uh, subject to confirmation by the town administrator.
Okay, yeah.
So if someone did so move, that motion has amended.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Still.
Aye.